Okay, thank you. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order. Will you please stand with me to say the pledge of allegiance? All right, and we'll commence with roll call. Councilman Loy?
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Henderson?
Here.
Councilman Cock?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Here.
Thank you, councilmembers, for being here. Moving on to item D, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll make that second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, second by Councilman Cock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Onto the consent agenda, items one through seven. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just wanted to inquire about six and seven, just for a second.
Sure.
I just wanted to see if maybe Family Promise would be willing to come in and kind of talk about what they're doing. I think they're here, right? So we thank you. And so be able to kind of get some feedback on that.
Did you read what this was about? One of it's a renewal.
These ones are the renewals, the one for the 14th, or 1406, to get that back in. And then the first one, we originally gave to them to be able to realign that and be able to change the wording from shelter to housing. Yeah, it looks good, but I wanted to get with you guys and see how you're doing.
So we don't have you on the schedule to, otherwise I would have to do that for everybody who's coming in. So I apologize, but it's good to see you here, Audra.
So it would be great to have you back and do something if that's available.
Yeah, we do. And we will do that. We appreciate what you do. Thank you. Thank you very much. So items one through seven, then, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca and a second by Councilman Burns to approve item C, consent agenda, items one through seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. All right, moving into, we have a special guest tonight. And actually, Lowell is our building inspector, the Sejroo Lee Building Inspector. And he is going to be giving a presentation as May is Safety Building Month. And it looks like, Tom, do you want to do the introduction here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I'd like to introduce Lowell Asmus, who is our relatively new building inspector and plans examiner. You've been here since socktober, November. And in that time, he has been working on his certs. He's raced through three of them so far, which is a lot in just the short amount of time. It's a lot of technical reading and testing, and good on you for doing that. He does this on the weekends, so I'm impressed. Anyway, so here's our chance to introduce you to Lowell. And then he'll talk a little bit about Building Safety Month and building safety generally, so go ahead.
Good evening, members of City Council, community leaders and residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today about a critical issue that affects us all, building safety. Ensuring our buildings are safe is not just about compliance with codes. It's about protecting lives, preserving investments, and fostering a strong, resilient, and sustainable community. I'll keep this next part here pretty brief to respect council's time. But why building safety matters, well, protecting lives, economic impact, disaster preparedness, legal and liability concerns. Key aspects of building safety, building codes and compliance, fire safety measures, structural integrity and maintenance. Excuse me. Emergency preparedness and response. Local action, what can we do locally? Well, we can strengthen building code enforcement, promote public awareness, support infrastructure investments, encourage smart growth and sustainable building, and collaboration with experts. In conclusion, building safety is not just a technical issue, it's a public safety priority. By investing in stronger building codes, regular inspections, fire safety measures, and emergency preparedness, we can protect lives, sustain our economy, and create a more resilient community. So today, I urge the City Council to proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Building Safety Month in the city of Sejroo Lee. Thank you for your time.
Are there any questions for Lowell? First off, I want to thank you for coming forward and doing this and making us aware. Also appreciate the fact that it's in the packet, because that does give the councilmembers the opportunity to peruse that. And like all the other directors and individuals that work here, if you wanted to meet with Lowell and talk more about building and safety, he'd be happy to do that.
Absolutely.
I know he has a pretty tight schedule, but he would work you in. I know he would. So, but thank you for what we can do. I love the fact that we can promote this, let the public know that building and safety is vital, especially to the welfare of our community, and also to encourage smart growth. And I know that this council's particularly concerned about that. And that's one of their foremost thoughts, is that we need to make sure that what we're doing is sustainable and it's also fits with who we are. So Lowell, so I actually have the proclamation, and I'll be happy to proclaim this Safety and Building Month. If it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and read this.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So proclamation recognizing May as the Building Safety Month, whereas our city committed to recognizing that growth and strength depends on the safety and the essential roles of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make our community is achieved through this devotion of vigilant guidance, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, designs professional, laborers, plumbers, and others in the constructive industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated, members of the Washington Association of Building Officials and International Code Council, nonprofit organizations that bring together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the building environment to create and implement the highest quality of codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, work, play, and whereas we join in support of this effort in association with the Washington Association of Building Officials and local chapters throughout the state, representing the state of Washington in national and local matters of public safety. And whereas these model building of codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas the Building Safety Month is sponsored by the Washington Association of Building Officials and the International Code Council, to remind the public about the critical role of our communities, largely unknown protectors of public safety, our code officials, which includes you, Lowell, who assure us safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas game on, the theme of the Building Safety Month for 2025 encourages us all to be involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of the Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment in home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential services provided by all of us, by local, state, tribal, territorial, federal building safety and fire prevention departments in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Julia Johnson, Mayor of the city of Sejroo Lee, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as the Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join in their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. So in question, I have a question for you.
Sure.
So what are the building safety activities that they may be able to participate in?
Well, I was looking to meet with the school district here, the local school district, and put together some activities for the different stages of youth. One idea I had was some coloring books for the youth, maybe some coloring contests, maybe for the junior high level, like a popsicle stick house building contest with the possibility of maybe showing off some of the contestants here at City Hall. Just trying to reach out to the community, maybe career days at the high school, getting some involvement, an education to the older youth so that maybe a future planner, or engineer, or building official, or mayor, or councilperson fosters and grows from that.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, where am I at? The City Administrator Report. Charlie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson. Couple of items tonight. The first one is, we had a request from council about the painting on a building downtown at Woodworth and Metcalf at the last meeting. And so we're just following up on that. And I'm going to probably refer to Tom here a little bit if he wants to come to podium as well. We had a, the building in question has, applied for a permit, has a permit to paint their building, to complete painting their building. And I believe that goes through the end of next year, is my recollection.
Yes.
But they're looking to do it this summer.
It's good for two years.
Yeah. Yep. So that is at least the status of that. The question specifically was, if the city wanted to fund that, how might that occur? And as I recall, yes.
If I may, Charlie, on that one. So they have a plan to continue to paint the building. We provided a $10,000 grant for them to paint the building as is. And from my understanding through our discussions is that they reached that point, that was their $10,000 cap, that they were done. So they have a plan outside of that grant with a two-year permit to continue that process once the funds are available. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what we've been told. Really, and I went back and looked at the details of their grant. They talked about doing painting of the building and a variety of other things, but they, their awning project pretty much took up their entire budget and then some, so.
Yeah, and I was kind of looking for something a little bit smaller, not a full building repaint, by no means. A strip to cover the space that's oversprayed, that maybe matches a color, a thing that ties the two colors in, a white and a tan or beige. And so something relatively small, definitely by no means a paint of the entire building. So if, I don't know if that's something that we want to even think about, if they're planning on painting it this summer anyways. Do you think, it's up to them, so we probably don't know if it'll be done by the events, the Fourth of July, La Giro Rodeo, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we don't know the timing exactly. It's, the ball's in their court. If the city wanted to potentially do something like that, we would recommend opening up the Community Development Grant Program again, allocating some money towards it, and that would be a way to provide an opportunity for somebody to apply to the city for the painting of their building. But they would have to apply to do that. We can't just do it for one particular property owner.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's necessary, even for the discussion if they plan on doing it anyways. So, yeah, I'm glad to hear that there is a plan to move forward with that. Our discussions was that, this is it, and they have a legal right to keep it that way for all time.
Yeah, there was also some discussion, and I won't steal the chair's thunder at the Planning and Business Development Committee meeting tonight about how to better work on this issue of colors and painting in the city.
Well, I appreciate you looking at that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Second item mine I had on here was an update on indigent defense, just to provide council kind of a expectation of what will eventually come your way. So we have had an RFQ out with Anacortes through the inter-local agreement the council approved recently with Anacortes, Mount Vernon, Burlington, and ourselves. We've had a number of respondents to that. We're currently evaluating qualifications. And it's pretty much down to two potential providers that would provide services to what is going to be three cities. Anacortes is, has, there was one applicant that came in, or one RFQ response that was specific to Anacortes, and Anacortes wants to go with that. So at the next meeting, on the 28th, you're going to see an amendment to the inter-local agreement that'll be coming your way, that basically removes Anacortes from the partnership and reshuffles the caseload percentages that would be paid by the remaining cities. Because Anacortes is gone, you pay a certain amount essentially for your caseload, so all of that cost is gone too. So hardly changed anything, but it's a technical need to do in order to keep the partnership going and have Anacortes out of it at this point, because they're going to go on their own.
Mayor, I've got a quick question.
Go ahead, Paul.
So my understanding is that the legislature provided a disappointingly small amount of funding statewide for indigent defense. So how will that impact us?
Yeah, we have not fully analyzed that, but we have budget for indigent defense for next year. And I'm optimistic that we'll be within that budget, but definitely would be helpful to get more money into the city. And so we'll be looking at that to see where we can potentially apply for funds or otherwise help ourselves.
Is that lawsuit resolved? Is that a done deal?
The standards at the Supreme Court are still in question at this point.
All right, thank you.
That's also kind of a wild card in our entire process.
Right, could really jack up the price astronomically.
Potentially, yes. So, and then our budget is higher as a result of anticipating that that could occur. But that is, that is coming to you, and then the contract will actually come to you if we come to agreement with a provider. Then we'll be bringing that to you as well. So, and that'll all come quite soon as we get it together here. I expect the next month or two. Just an update in indigent defense, and that's all I have unless there are further questions.
All right. Thank you, Charlie. Moving on to council report, I'll begin with you, Councilman Loy.
I have nothing, Ms. Wade, Mayor.
All right. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. My questions tonight are about our social media protocols. I received multiple calls from community members who were confused by the recent city post about the special events ordinance, particularly because it was shared without much context, and this isn't typically how we post ordinances. When people sought clarification, they found the mayor's response on her personal page, where she mentioned there would be another council conversation on the ordinance. And this has raised some concerns. If an ordinance or issue is posted on the city's official social media, shouldn't the follow-up and clarification also come from that official platform? Otherwise, only those who follow certain personal pages will see the information. And that creates confusion and inconsistency in how we communicate with the public. I think we need to be consistent and mindful of how we present and clarify city matters. And ideally, that should be done through our official city channels where it's transparent and accessible to everyone.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Good evening. I have a few things here. First of all, I did attend the Planning and Development, Business Development Committee meeting. And we did discuss some murals and signs in the downtown districts. And I passed along one of the complaints I received this past week in regards to Christmas themes still up and around town, specifically in windows. And so that's something that, it's my understanding, we passed along and discussed with the chamber and maybe encouraged that Christmas and decor and themes outside of current events would be, would be addressed to keep our downtown business district aesthetically pleasing and to help with the economic development and people coming through there. So I passed that along. Aside from that, I received traffic complaints, again, not necessarily on my normal state ferry Metcalf complaints, but this time it came from an individual specifically complaining about Cook Road and Trail Road. Again, great concern about what the traffic coming out of the gas station, Trail Road at the same time, as well as the buses coming out of the bus garage area specifically between 4:00 and 5:30 PM, that it's becoming incredibly dangerous as the weather is getting better. We're getting people coming in and out of town, it's backing up traffic. And we're getting very close, almost accidents that are being witnessed by multiple people on numerous occasions, especially when we've got a lot more kids and families coming in and out of Janiki Playfields as well through there. So just the, during those times, we have people coming and going through that general area and the congestion and the turning and people's directions are people are very nervous that there's going to be a very serious accident. So passing that on again. Also, I did have constituents actually show up to my doorstep to discuss the special events ordinance, which is perfectly fine. I'm happy to discuss any of that stuff with individuals. I, too, also questioned the, how social, how we, as a city, we will handle social media in regards to it. I had not been aware that it was posted, so when I had somebody waiting for me to come home from work, that's the reality of a small town, and I have absolutely no issue with that. I happened to actually know of the individual, so it wasn't of that, of a concern to me of having some just person hanging out on my porch. But just so that everybody is aware that that stuff actually does happen, I did discuss, three people came to my doorstep. Two people were unhappy with it in the way that it was written and the way that it was presented to the public. And one person was actually okay with it and believed that we shouldn't have to increase taxpayers for additional services outside if, in fact, it is incurring additional services and not bringing in sales tax revenue in order to support it. So that would be a discussion to be further discussed this evening. Outside of that, I'll hold my additional thoughts for the additional issues tonight. That's all I have.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. I met with a homeowner in the area of Fourth and Warner Street. We have, that intersection there is in extreme disrepair. And so I got to go at right about 2:30 when the buses started leaving the high school. And each one of them dropped about four inches down coming into the intersection, and it rattled their windows and everything like that. So I said I'd bring it up to you, because that seems like, we kind of surveyed the area a little bit, and that seemed like the most immediate need. Now, we do have Fourth and Talcott, which are both concrete slab roadways, which we know are a little bit more difficult and time-consuming to fix. But I'd bring up that immediate need to you tonight.
Oh, yeah, we'll go take a look at it, and maybe there's a repair we can fit in with our street program. We got good bids, so.
Okay.
We'll try to take care of it.
Thank you. And the other item, I had several people reach out to me after a meeting several weeks ago where we, as a council, decided to task staff on writing an ordinance for a 1% cap on our levy per year based on what the state legislature was doing at the time. So I had people asking for an update on that, because they're interested in bringing that to their council members of their different municipalities and going off of the same program that we decided to go off of.
The bill didn't pass?
I know.
Yeah.
I know the bill didn't pass, but regardless, the council passed a directive to staff to write this. So, whenever you can get an update on that, Charlie, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Cock?
We held a meeting of the Planning and Business Development Committee, and councilmember Diamond just, you know, went over some of it. We basically took no formal action, but we, the sense was to, in terms of, we were discussing murals and, you know, it's a complex issue, and we sort of, and we're looking more at a rewrite of design standards and somehow working in the murals into that. And also to try to get some feedback about downtown. And at some point, and this is, you know, not definitive, bringing in the chamber and maybe some of the business owners to discuss and get feedback about some of the needs and things about downtown. The only other thing I had was, was Bill, are we still on pretty good shape on the roundabout at McGargyle and Highway Nine at the middle school? Because I've had people ask me about that, because it'll be a huge help to, it'll temporarily not be a huge help, but it'll eventually be a huge help.
Sorry. So we are opening bids tomorrow for the roundabout construction, so cross your fingers. Our, our street improvement program opened bids yesterday, and we had excellent bids. And so the first of four low bids were within 5% of each other and right in the middle of the engineer's estimate. So we're verifying, you know, the different preferred candidates or low bids for the, gosh. Whoever the lowest responsible bidder is, that's what I was trying to say. And so that will probably get finalized by the end of the week. And so I'm, with that amount of optimism, I'm very optimistic now that we'll get good bids for the roundabout. And next council meeting, we'll be bringing both of those to council for potential execution of contracts with the respective low bid companies.
Great, good. That's good news. Thank you very much.
Okay. And Councilman Burns?
Well, I have two things. First, I had a constituent ask me about Seventh and Talcott that's closed for the elementary school for Central. They were asking why it was closed year-round when the school is not always open. Apparently, I know when I first moved to that house, it was open during the summer. And I suspect I'm about to answer my own question, because they also asked me about Talcott between Seventh and Township and having it repaved, which it is quite a rough section. So would that be the reason why we're not opening it?
I don't know. I'll have to look into that.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is that today's Police Officer Memorial Day and Police Officer Week, so just wanted to thank you all for what you do.
All right. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, yeah, I had a couple of things, too. Thank you very much, Councilman Cock, for talking about the Jones and John Liner, or the Jones, not even Jones, the John Liner Roundabout. That's come up. I live in that ward, so preparation on what people need to do to anticipate traffic delays and how they go about it for that neighborhood, for sure. Are you planning on sending out a flyer or something to that ward or local people within that area?
Pencil's rolling. So, yes, that will be part of, when the contractor comes on board, starts making their construction signs and that type of thing, we will do a canvassing of that. Those local area folks will be the most impacted by it and telling them how they can navigate either through the construction or bypass the construction for local traffic and that type of thing.
Cool, right on. I'm sure the people will love to hear that. I saw that we moved the sign on Highway Nine Roundabout over to the center of the roundabout, the Sejroo Lee sign. Looks good. I didn't notice that when I drove by, so I'm not sure when it did, but somebody said, yeah, it looks good. So kind of a nice addition when you're coming in. I wonder if we can get something on the backside of that sign to kind of create a two-way sign when you're going this way and this way, so you're not looking at the blank back.
Possibly. Right now, that's kind of a repurposed sign, so we don't really have a mirror image at this time. But if that is of interest, we can find out what it would take to make one.
There was a time that we had an individual, Peter, come out, and they had a thing at the community center. The students ended up winning the ability to build out something for a roundabout, right? Did that ever manifest out to be something? I've never saw any student art or anything in a roundabout. And if not, would that be a good opportunity to create something of that same template and have the students create something?
The mayor may know a little bit more than I do, but right now, we have, we're, the mayor, myself, and the proponents of that particular effort, we met again just, what, a couple of months ago?
Actually, yeah, actually just a couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago, okay. And there is an effort to, basically, there's an artist designing, I don't know if it's trout or salmon, but whatever it is.
Salmon, yeah.
And, and those sheet metal sculptures, if you want to call them that, are right now, I think, being manufactured by the high school students.
Nice. That's going to look good, then.
Yeah.
Great for to send some, some thoughts on that. I was asked about, because we had North Star come, and they gave a good presentation, so, but we have really good local agents. North Star come and they gave a good presentation. So but we have really good local agencies, Family Promise, who happens to be here now, Helping Hands, which does amazing work. And then we have our teen center. So we're touching the teens, the seniors, and then we're touching people that are the families in between. And we've had a really good discussion on that. But they just wanted to see kind of where we were with that. So it was a great timing. And as I saw it in the packet. So maybe we can have a discussion with those guys. I know last year, they we approved funds to get them through the winter and kind of into the spring season. And then we do have the RPFs going out, but just kind of to hear a little bit back from that for the community. And then lastly is that special events, I did receive a lot of phone calls on that. I had a lot of discussions on that. The code was rewritten and submitted, but it wasn't changed in a way that it changed any of the cost or anything. So the way that it was presented to the public, in in my opinion, and the way that it seemed to be interpreted by other people, and even the reporters that wrote about it, was that the council made this new document and, you know, change stuff and then put it forward and the council did it. And then with all respect, Mayor, the mayor would come in and save the day and bring it back to the council and get it all situated. But that's not what happened. We were proposed with the change from the from the executive branch, which is normally what goes on. The council weighs it out with the advice given by the executive branch. And I was under the impression at that time, which we'll continue to talk about, but just as the the people that came to me were very concerned on how that went. And there wasn't going to be any changes to our events as far as how that goes. So it sounded like that wasn't the case. And it still isn't. But you guys are going to be enforcing those costs is what when I dug into it and got down to the depth of it, which would have been the case had you not even brought that before at that week. So I appreciate you receiving my email to bring this back as soon as we can so we can discuss it and get good information on there and then be able to get that straightened out. So I do appreciate you guys saying that.
Okay. Something that I do want to make comment about is 1590. The RFP is on our website and is going out. So that's out there to service groups and other individuals that may be or other entities that may be interested in applying for some of the 1590 funding. So putting that out there. Also, we received news from a company called Safewise, who every year does safety surveys and as far as criminal activity. And they were telling us or what they said to us is that they were pleased to announce that Seager Woolley ranked number two in the safest city in Washington in their 2025 safest cities report. So congratulations to York. Yeah, doing a good job. One last thing, I wanted to make the council aware. So I think it was two or three councils ago, we looked at funding that we were going to apply for through SCOG. Kyle actually made the presentation. And he put out memo that was saying he has heard from SCOG. And it looks like the funding requests that were submitted are going to be approved. So he said the finalization is in June, but SCOG was saying that it looks very promising. So I want to thank everybody who worked on that. It was a lot of work, especially in the Public Works Department. So thank you very much, Bill, for your department and everything that you did. That was a lot of work that had to happen there.
It equals about $2.1 million to the city.
Yeah, 2.2. Yeah, 2.2. Yeah. And also to the council for approving those applications. Okay, moving on, we're going to be doing a public hearing. Public hearing has to do with the 2025 budget amendment. This is ordinance 209825. This is a first read. And we are required to do a public hearing. For the public's sake, this is what this is how it will go. Our Director of Finance, Kelly Conken, will give us an overview and share with us information regarding the budget. After she has completed that, I will turn it over to the public to provide public comment if you want to. Remember that this public comment will be only about the budget. Whatever Kelly is presenting and talking about, you can you can reference. We are going to have a second public comment. So if you've come for something else other than the budget, you're welcome to do that at the second at the public comment. After the public comment is closed, I'll turn it over to the council and then any questions or comments they may have, they can be provided at that time. So with that, Kelly, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is the first read as the mayor indicated and the public hearing. The city passed the 2025-2026 biennial budget in November of 2024. This ordinance is a routine amendment to the 2024 or the 2025 budget. So we'll first start by talking about the general fund. We tried to present this information in two ways, as you know, people take in information in different ways. So we kind of did it in writing and then some tables as well. So Woody, if you could go to the next table on the next page. So specifically talking about the general fund, this budget amendment would revise revenues to $15,011,000 and expenditures by $14,730,000, which would leave the general fund with an excess of $281,000 for 2025. I did want to note something unusual in this budget amendment. At the end of 2024, a grant in the Arterial Street had the funds hadn't come in yet. So the Arterial Street Fund had a negative balance. The general fund lent the Arterial Street Fund $541,000. So the revenue, the increase in revenue in the general fund in this budget amendment is strictly the Arterial Street repaying the general fund. That grant came in within the, I think, the first two months of the year. So that fund had sufficient resources to repay the general fund. So just wanting to be as clear about that as possible. If if you if we took out that loan repayment increase in revenue in the general fund for 2025 with this proposed budget, we would be at a deficit of $260,000. We do have fund balance, sufficient fund balance in the general fund to cover that. Next thing I wanted to highlight was some of the one time costs included in this budget. So that would increase our expenditures in the general fund. The first one is for Olmsted Park. At a previous council meeting, the council had approved some of the additional items to be added at Olmsted Park and also approved a motion to use $353,000 of general fund fund balance for that project. So that's in the category of preauthorized council one time money. We also had a couple of other one time items we wanted to point out. The first one is a jail stabilization payment that we had to make to the Tuskegee County of $23,000, $24,000. Also have a couple of projects, including window privacy film on all of the windows at City Hall, including in the council chambers, adding a Sallygate to this alleyway, and adding a financial, an additional office in the finance department. So all those one time costs are budgeted at $491,000. So again, just to give some context, if you remove or if you exclude those one time costs, our our budget would be in the positive $231,000. So just trying to give some context of continuing operating costs versus one one time projects. And that 231 is the taking out the revenue and the one time cost, again, just to give context. So also provided, what if you want to scroll down a little bit, a summary of what was changed in the budget. So again, the only revenue we changed in the general fund was that repayment of a loan. We also added or made an adjustment for HR. In the original budget, we included a part time HR analyst and the revised budget includes a full time HR manager beginning the second half of the year. It also includes an additional one FTE for an IT workstation support specialist for IT support. This position was discussed at the Finance and IT Committee meeting in February. We've also discussed previously the COPS grant and adding a position to the police department. The COPS grant would be over three years and would cover about a third of the cost for each of those three years. So you'll see those three things, the costs in the budget and then on the FTE count at the end of the budget. It also includes the estimated impact of police labor negotiations. And then there's another document in there with some other minor or with some other changes as well. So on the next table, we just wanted to show show that the increase in expenditures in the general fund are $487,000. But if we take out some of those one time costs, we did have corresponding decreases for the other items. So without those one time costs, the general fund budget did have a minor decrease of expenditures in about $4,000. We included, for your reference, just the council action that was taken regarding Olmsted Park. And then we there are some changes to other funds as well, but they're more minor minor changes. A fire update to ERNR, fuel expense adjustment for ERNR. We updated the lodging tax grant fund in 2024. We the council had not approved the expenditures, the specific grants that were going to be applied. So we now have and have updated that fund and are making urinal upgrades at the skate park in another in another fund. We've included several different documents in here. The first one is the actual draft ordinance and how it would be presented. The next item is a summary of all the changes. It's on page 85, Woody. Just going over all the the original budget, what the amended budget would be and the differences for both revenues and expenditures and a brief explanation. One of the things you'll see in here is we do have minor adjustments to payroll calculations. When we have a vacancy, we often estimate especially benefits at the higher end. We don't know what someone is going to come in if they're going to be or if we're just going to be benefiting them or themselves, a spouse and two kids. So some of that is hiring into those positions and recalculating the actual cost. So this just provides a summary of all of the funds and all of the changes. But on page 87, we did want to provide a more detailed breakout of what was changed in the general fund. So here is the further detail of what was changed in in the general fund there. And I think that's the that's some of the highlights of the amendments to the 2025 budget.
Kelly, I want to thank you because this is really great work that you put a lot of details into this. And I think you did offer, just as you said, the opportunity for people to read through this, for the council to read through this and take it in and maybe ways that they would learn. So I want to thank you for doing that. Really great materials. Also want to thank you for putting out the opportunity for the council to come in and talk with you about this if they wanted to. You always do that. And I appreciate that, that you allow them to come in and talk if they want to. And also the way that you gave the detailed breakout in the side so that if there are any questions or concerns, it can be addressed at that time. So really great work. Thank you very much. Yeah. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to the public for public comment. Again, this would be only be comments about the budget itself and what Kelly has shared. So it's 6:43. Is there anybody who would like and I'm going to open up public comment now. Is there anybody who'd like to come forward and give comment or have any questions regarding this budget? Okay. All right. Seeing none, then I will close public comment and I will turn this over to the council and give them opportunity to ask questions or make comments. And do I have any council members who are interested in doing that? Councilman Cock?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I fully support the move to a full time HR person. We tried the part time position and it was not effective and did not work. And we came to I came to the conclusion that we need a full time HR person in order to protect the the city from potential liability risks and many other things that would benefit the city, including a better help for the workforce. So I'm just glad that was in there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
First of all, thank you very much, Kelly, for going through and putting this together. I do appreciate it. I'm I'm always on the fence because I believe that our budget's very tight and I do like a zero balance budget, but I like to see a lot more saved. I think with the 281,000 left over from this budget in 2025, we're like at 0.06% of what we actually take in. So we're not we don't really have a nest egg. And it would be really cool to set aside more of a nest egg. And I think that's well, that's exactly why I voted against the budget in November. To be able to see us, you know, kind of move stuff around. I did see that you guys you have your short breakdown, but when you go through the budget, you move stuff from original to proposed. And a lot of that was a larger amount in the original to a lesser amount and proposed in order to make a way for an HR position. So it's not just going through and and pulling money out of the taxpayer, which was a big thing to us. But you're actually moving stuff around to create that. And so, yeah, on this amendment, it's challenging to go through amendment six months after a budget goes through because some of that stuff, you know, I'd like to see preplanned or or whatnot. There was a couple of things in there. We'll always have the one time cost, I believe. So on that, if we're talking about the full time HR manager, which is is basically a large portion, it's not a full portion of that, but it's a large portion of what we're moving from a part time, it was proposed 58 to a full time for the rest of this year at 95. What is the anticipated level we're bringing that in? I know that you guys provided a sheet from the level one to level nine on the salary report. And I think if it was up to me in talking with the directors about the the HR position and kind of how Aaron Berg used to do it, we we basically replaced Aaron Berg with HR and with the with Nikki, our lawyer. So that kind of goes that way. Charlie ends up becoming somebody that helps the the directors, which is fitting because we actually have all new staff, something to be said. I mean, everybody that's a director in the city right now hasn't been here for more than four years. And so there has been a lot of coaching. There's been a lot of like, hey, this is how you get your feet wet. And it is appreciated, Charlie. So I'm not trying to diminish that at all. But and I think you did a great job in that. Obviously, the city is running really good. So for that. So what what level are you looking at for the HR? Is it the human resources analyst or the human resources manager in this budget? Or is it kind of shoot high?
So that'll be a discussion for another day, will it not?
Oh, is it? It's in our packet.
Yeah.
It's in here. It's the HR manager level position. And there's additional information that we provided this evening. And so it's at the dais with a little bit more detail on it. It's not it. It's in there somewhere. I think you have it.
And we don't. Yeah, it was left with us and.
It's, yeah, so grade 127. The HR analyst was grade 122. So the salary range is listed there. Salary range for HR manager is 103 to 123. Salary range for HR analyst, assuming it was full time, is $82,000 to $97,000.
And I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels, but I feel that if we get an HR, you know, they should be skilled at what they do. There's going to be a lot to do there. So we're probably not looking at that lower level. So in all reality, in weighing out this budget, what's this going to look like? How is this growth position going to manifest over the years for the 2026-2027 budget that we have in place? I just looking at it as roughly a four, five that I would anticipate that to be. Does that sound about right for for the 127?
Oh, what are you referring to what step they would be?
Oh, what, are you referring to what step they would be on?
Which step we'd hire them on to.
Yeah, we budgeted at step four, not knowing who would be, who, it could be. It, it could be different, but just as trying to get the most reasonable budget estimate, we did it at step four.
I do appreciate the invite too. To, I was actually going to call you today or yesterday and I was like, oh, maybe it's a little late. It's what happens when you work off shifts and you work a day job. Right. All right. Thank you.
It counts, one Henderson?
Yep, thanks. So I'm looking at the one-time, additional one-time costs. So can you take me through this additional office and finance for $15,000?
Yeah, so we've had a need for one of our full-time employees to have a dedicated space. They're kind of out, out in the open and that is the estimate Public Works provided us. A large portion of it is some of the, like the sprinkler and safety items, you know, constructing the walls. And those sorts of things are inexpensive, but the safety things cost a little bit more.
Okay. And so we have an additional ask for an additional IT person here?
Correct.
Okay. Have, have we looked into any other options with IT?
We, we have not looked at other options, although the IT does have an intern right now and that they've been helpful out of Job Corps. So we have, we have done some things like that in the past and currently, but we have not looked at other options in terms of outsourcing or anything like that.
Okay. I took the liberty of doing that myself today. We have, on our February 26 committee meeting, it was provided in the report that a city with a similar population size and staff count have IT departments with around five to seven employees. That seems very excessive, especially since we were told not too long ago that it should be about a one-to-one ratio between HR and, and IT. So I did some digging into what some of the other cities are doing based on their IT efforts. And I use the city of Burlington, which we use a lot as a, as a reference point. So within the last two years, the city of Burlington's IT department has either retired or gone off to other jobs. So they were tasked with figuring out how to revamp their IT department. And what they found was that they were able to outsource. And right now, between what they were paying in salaries, they're saving the city, and these numbers were from today, $200,000 a year.
So Woody's actually online. I don't know, Director, if you would like to make comment or not?
We recently implemented a ticketing system so we could keep track of all the man-hours that IT is actually putting in. And I was planning on reaching out to the local managed service providers to see what their hourly rate would be. Of course, if the city goes with the managed service provider, they'd get a, a contract deal, so it wouldn't be quite as much. But we will soon be able to present the man-hours with the dollar value behind it to present to the staff. And then we can continue these discussions during the next technology and finance committee.
So are we looking at waiting on doing this budget amendment until we've exhausted all those options?
Well, I mean, that's up to the council ultimately. We've recommended the position. We've got two IT employees. Even in smaller cities, it's typical to have three if you've got it in-house. And I can tell you, both of them are non-stop because my office is close to theirs, just non-stop, all over the organization, doing things. Trying to move projects, trying to update servers, trying to do a whole bunch of projects that are really critical. This position would, would help them drive those projects more effectively. And with the ticketing system and some of the other improvements we're making, we're going to have our arms around this a lot more. In the future, you know, it's possible, we, we may, a lot of cities will have like a hybrid approach. So you'll have some contractors doing certain types of things and you'll have staff at kind of the core of it managing that. So there are a lot of different ways to configure an IT operation and there are some downsides to contractors as well. Finding the right contractor is really critical. I've worked in a city that contracted out IT and we brought it in-house. And one of the reasons was the contractors we had as partners did not understand public records. They did not understand how to maintain servers. We had servers that crashed almost every week. So we, we had a lot of problems with that. That's just one example. But there are, there are plenty of discussions. We can have more data. But right now, our IT operation is pretty overwhelmed and that's my biggest concern. That's, that's why we're recommending adding this position.
Well, and I can totally appreciate how busy people are. My concern is the impact to our budget and what that impact relays on to the people who are paying taxes. And if I can look at something and I can see that it's saving a lot of money in a different municipality completely, going from two, two employees to outsourcing it and saving over $200,000. I have the exact numbers on my phone. I could get them out for you if you want. But I see that as massive savings that could be used in other places where, where we see a huge shortfall, like with what we were told about needing an IT person, needing that full-time person. And the danger of adding employees over and over, over time, because those are salaries that don't go away, unless we want to ruin somebody's year by telling them, hey, guess what? You don't have a job anymore because we can't afford you. So I would, I would be incredibly cautious about, about adding employees before we've, before we've exhausted other resources.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Diamond.
In regards to the HR manager, I can see that being a realistic ask. We have gone down the part-time road and I have no issue with that from a risk management standpoint for the employees, for the city, for the taxpayers, so long as it is a budget-neutral impact on them. I don't want to create administrative positions that are going to be pushed off on the taxpayers. It's not, that's not a fair ask. So as long as there's a, as long as the budget is neutrally impacted, I'm good with the HR position. I am not confident in the IT position in regards to our budget right now. I think that this should be something that we need to look at actually exhausting options. And I also made a couple of phone calls through some, some various people that I know at different, different cities. And they had mentioned that their IT was outsourced. And if they did actually have two people in-house, that, you know, additional things were handled by interns or that additional, certain projects could be outsourced to save taxpayers' dollars. So if, if that is the case and we can save the taxpayers' money, that's the route I would like to do. So I, it, it would be my request to scratch the IT position for this amendment. And if you wanted to further discuss it in a, in next year's budget, that would be something to discuss. But right now, looking at where we're sitting and only having the revised surplus, quote, deficit at just about $231,000 sitting here in May, when we have just a few more months to go in the balance of the year. And it's pretty common to have budget amendments come through at least one to two more times before the end of the year. I'm not confident sitting here with just that much, knowing that we're likely to have more budgets, budget changes here. And I would, I would like to feel more confident in talking with the constituents that we're not going to have to go back to the drawing board at some point because it's not, it's not a fair ask to ask these people that are living on fixed incomes and living on set wages from private companies that are currently just trying to survive right now when we're trying to add additional staff here for long-term, long-term funding. Because it would be unfair to add a position if we can't guarantee funding for a minimum of 10 years is what I've, what I would be believing, right? You're not going to hire somebody and say that you have, you have this job and then three years later, oh, sorry, you don't have that job because we've got to raise taxes in order to fund you. And, and we, we can't do that to employees nor can we do that to the taxpayers. So it would be my, my recommendation to scratch the IT. I'm good with the HR so long as it's budget-neutral. We had discussed the police for the, starting with that three-year grant. I think that's great. That's definitely, that's something that we had talked about in the past and something that's moving forward. Police estimated impact of, of labor negotiations, that's a constant, so that's not going to change. That's going to be amended every year. And then, I mean, just based on the small amount that we are currently looking at sitting in our, our funding here, I question whether, you know, having a $15,000 office and, you know, some of that little stuff here and there is actually necessary. Because that $15,000 in all reality is probably not actually $15,000. We're probably going to get hit with another budget amendment that it actually costs more because you're looking at changing, you know, updating sprinkler systems and office walls and fire standards and stuff. And so that, and that stuff's not cheap. So that's my two cents.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I completely agree with Councilwoman Henderson and Diamond on all of their points. And you know that I was going to say something about the $15,000 because there was a time when this building was first built and you could walk up to the front desk and you saw someone, they were there to greet you. And all of the girls multitasked at their different jobs. And $15,000, I don't think is well-spent for, she has a cubicle as is right now. I'd like to see that go away and be open space. I'd like to see no phone tree. So I'm very much not on favor with that as well.
Okay. Councilwoman Burns?
I'm still very much in favor of the full-time HR position. I think that's something we should have done a while ago. It's hampered the ability to fire, hire first responders and to get the city staffed properly. So I definitely like seeing that going forward. When it comes to IT, knowing the liabilities that we have, I am cautious about leaving them in any way short-staffed. I am open to alternatives. If Woody would be able to look at companies in the area, the reputation that they have. You know, I'm an auto mechanic. You can save money by buying a Kia Rio, but it won't go as far as a Honda Civic. You know, you, you get what you pay for sometimes. And yes, companies can sometimes do it cheaper than cities, but they may or may not have the type of person that we'd be hiring or getting the quality equipment that we might buy. So I would like to go much deeper than just the cost to find out what we'd actually be getting if we were to outsource any portion of that. And also having someone who's in-house is substantially more useful than having someone who is a ways away when it comes to hands-on. So I think that Woody and his other employee don't have to worry about going anywhere on that part, as far as I'm concerned. I very much want to make sure that we keep everything functioning properly in the city while we save as much money as we can for the constituents. That's my, my opinion on what I see here.
Thank you. Councilman Cock?
Just one thought. Yeah, I'm okay with looking a bit more of outsourcing. One thing to keep in mind in terms of IT, because I have relatives in the field, is the effect of artificial intelligence, AI, which is going to, it cuts both ways. On the one hand, it can speed up many of our functions in government to make them more customer-friendly, but it also might allow IT to do things more efficiently. I think it's certainly worth looking into.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I also took the liberty of looking into other avenues of outsourcing. And I contacted a company called HR Pacific Northwest. And they have a client similar to ours, similar to us, that they handle a lot of the day-to-day and hirings of public safety sector people, a lot of these other different things. And if it would be of interest to the council for us to have a special presentation by this company during one of our upcoming council meetings and they can analyze the needs of what we need and they can go to bid. We could put out an RFP for other companies to compete, all in the good nature of getting the job done, first of all, and getting that job done in a financially responsible manner. I know we've had a lot of problems in the last year and a half, some big, well, not a lot of problems, but some big problems we have. And you guys got through it and we're very grateful to all of your guys' hard work and we want to help you. We, we really want to do this, but we can't, we can't keep adding to our budget. We can't keep adding these high-dollar positions to our city and think that that's going to be sustainable. So like I said before, I want to, I want to exhaust all necessary avenues before, before we just pull the trigger on saying, okay, yeah, we're going to, we're going to hire this HR manager person. And then a year later, whoops, we made a mistake. So.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor. Charlie, when we first talked about it, we actually talked about it a few times, the HR position. And it was going to be starting off with, I think, one and a half and kind of moving from there up. And so we were kind of thinking is that a consultant would be best and that you guys were using a consultant partially, but then you would go move into exploring using a consultant more and having that halftime position. How did that work out and have, you know, did, how did that consultant work out? And how much workload did you place on them before we kind of came to this?
Yeah, we, we were not able to identify a consultant arrangement that would work well for us. We, what we really need is somebody here in the building. We need presence here. The consultants I looked at, most of the ones I found would fill in for you. They could come and be your HR for some period of time. You would pay them, you know, a fair, a fair amount as consultants to do that. But, but there were a lot of relationships I found with cities where you have in-house consultants providing the services entirely. So we did not explore that too deeply. I mean, I looked at it and we, we considered options, but ultimately we settled on the halftime, you know, HR analyst and that didn't work out for a variety of reasons. And that model was also difficult, even having somebody here halftime was really difficult because people need, in our organization and most organizations of our size, they need HR present in their organization. And it's important to have a relationship with the people who are a part of HR. They are the, basically a neutral third party for all of us. And so that's, that's what we've done. We, so we did not enter into a contract with the consultant. It would have been a large contract. It definitely would have had to come to council.
I, I would definitely agree with Councilman Henderson and Councilman Diamond on the fact that consultants could save us a lot of money and we don't have to let them go if we run into a shortfall. We, we see that we already have a very tight budget. So I would be in favor of seeing that, even if we did get FTE HR position filled. I think a consultant would be somebody they can lean on. And so we're not having in six months a halftime and then that move into a full-time in eight or, or nine months, an additional position. So I'd be interested in hearing what they have to offer. I've heard about the consulting services for HR and type services and they do too pretty good for their resource, especially with IT. If we're pulling IT off of this plate, is there a way to bank that? Which we should be trying to, if we can on this, when we do vote on the amendment next time or when it comes back to see that, that deficit become a positive or if we're not doing the loans, he and our, our positive at the 281 actually grow into a substantial more ability that we can start banking to the side. It does affect the 2026, 2027. That's not reflected here, but those are ongoing budgets. So I'm not sure how we adjusted those budgets to make way for that HR. But I think everybody agreed that it's going to be, you know, balanced budget with that new HR position.
Yeah, appreciate the comments on HR as kind of a augmentation to, or HR consulting is an augmentation in HR position. That definitely is a model that cities use and it's something we've done. When we did our personal policy manual update for the first time in several decades, we had a consultant play a key role in that. So definitely for projects like that, classification and compensation studies, we used a consultant for that as well. And then in terms of the HR position, I mean, we took out ongoing costs to make sure that it was budget-neutral. So the things that put us, the one-time expenses are the things that created the negative.
I think we're always going to see the one-time. Every year, every year, there's going to be, like you were saying, another budget amendment, probably two or three this year or something. Every year, every year, there's going to be, like you were saying, another budget amendment, probably two or three this year or something. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Loy, I want to give you the opportunity to make comment.
Well, after, you know, I read all the information and listened to my constituents. And it, I'm in about the same boat as everybody else, you know. Tight budget, we got to be careful. So I'm pretty much the same as everybody else here. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I am going to close the public hearing on the 2025 Budget Amendment Number One, Ordinance 209825. As you all know, this is a first read and we will be bringing this back. So next on our agenda is the public comment. So at 7:09, I'm going to open public comment. I ask that you give your name and maybe how you're affiliated with the city. And then if you can keep it to three minutes, your comments are three minutes, that'd be great. So do we have people signed up? We do, okay. I'll call them in order and then I'll open it up to those who may not have. All right, thank you. Okay, so the first person up is Brenda Syrian-Sim.
Thank you very much. I'm pretty sure in my statement it will say where I come from.
Sorry to interrupt. Can we turn on the mic?
Oh, so Brenda, there's a button right here. And you'll see a blue light come on and you'll know you're on. Success, awesome.
I didn't think I needed a microphone. I have been involved with Lager Rodeo for 49 years, since I was 17 years old. Starting with running for Lager Rodeo Queen, to running the Queen Contest, Chairman of the Kitties Parade for about 16 years, and the Grand Parade. My dad never saw a grand parade because he was a Lions Club member for 50-plus, maybe close to 60 years. And he was always working Jamison and Fidalgo Streets. The Syrian family has 10 to 26 family members and friends working for the parade that we recruit and tell them that they have to do it. We continue this in honor of my dad. When I ran the Kitties Parade, I asked for an extra policeman because we needed it to walk around and make sure that the parents behaved. Yes, at a Kitties Parade, it was unbelievable. At the Grand Parade, a couple of years ago, my sister was threatened. She was running Talcott and Third Street and just short of the registration table. My nephew was handling the parade lineup at the high school. And he had a person running for a local position, not the mayor, not the city council, trying to push him around. She demanded to go to the front of the parade. And rather than her number, which was number 43, and she kept stating, "Don't you know who I am?" She did not win. My brother handles Jamison and Fidalgo Streets. Still to this date, the worst conflict he encountered was a church float. Again, yeah, a church float. These are only a few of our encounters that we have during, trying to put together our parade. We need the extra police protection, not only for the community, but for us volunteers. And Joe knows this. He's involved with Lions Club and he has heard our concerns every year, especially when we put the parade together at Mom and Dad's house. People don't step up and volunteer these days, so let's protect the volunteers we have. I hope we can come up with a plan or a solution to protect all of our events. And that's just not Lager Rodeo. That is the Chamber of Commerce's, that's our Christmas parade. It is the Halloween event for our little kids, including my two little grandkids. We have the graduation parade, the veterans parade. All the events are my concern. And I would like us to find a plan or a solution to help us out because we're not sure if we can fund the extra manpower. So I'm going to end with saying, "Small town, big parade." And thank you for listening. Thanks.
Thank you, Brenda. Dottie Chandler?
Hi, thank you. I'm Dottie Chandler, President of the Lager Rodeo. I've been on the Lager Rodeo Committee for over 15 years. This is my ninth year as president. I have some comments. I don't know the answers. Technically, the Fourth of July celebration is older than the City of Cedar Woolley because we started in 1886 and you guys did not start till 1890, 1892. So we should be grandfathered in. The city collects a gate tax, I think that's what it's called, from the carnival. And the last two years, I know, two years ago, it was over $8,000, about $8,200. And last year, it was over $9,000. Where is this money used and why can't it be earmarked for extra monies for the Lager Rodeo? Because if we didn't have the carnival, you wouldn't have that extra money. With the new hotel that's coming in, that's going to bring more hotel motel tax monies in. And I don't know if the hotel motel tax is designated for only grants or if part of that could be earmarked for extra monies for like the Christmas parade or the other events that go, that it could be set aside. And also, on the special events application, it does not say anything about a fee or anything when we fill that out. And also, does Cedar Woolley Police have a presence at the rodeo? Because to my understanding, the Lager Rodeo is in the county, not in the city. So I'm hoping we can come up with a plan because I do not want to see this go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Dottie. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment? Yes.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Irish. I'm with the Cedar Woolley Lager Rodeo. I've been in Cedar Woolley all my life. My grandpa bootlegged whiskey here in the 50s. So that's how I come about. I joined the Lager Rodeo about six years ago. Didn't realize that I could volunteer until after I was 50. I am the treasurer of the Lager Rodeo. And we have never paid this tax that's implemented today. I know by not paying it, there's a, there's a word that I can't remember what it is. It's, it's that we've never done it. And now with this new ordinance or whatever, I'm not good with politics. And I know that we need our police, we need our fire, we need that help. We need the, the guys to come in and help us. And, but we have no funds, no funds at all to, to be able to pay this tax. So we just need to work something out if you want this to keep going. And I, since I've been here, I've always went to the parade. I've always went to the carnival. The carving is new, it's a newer. But we don't want to see this go away. It brings a huge amount of people to our community. Yes, our shops aren't here like they used to be, but we still have Oliver and Hammer. We have a lot of food vendors or...
Restaurants?
Thank you. You know, we have all those people that are going to make a huge amount of money. And I just talked to Lorenzo's the other, last night. I said, you know, the Fourth of July is coming up. He goes, "I know, we're going to be busy." So, you know, they, they look forward to that. I look forward to it. I love to see the Kitties Parade. Every kid in this city or county looks forward to that if they've been here all their lives and their parents and their grandparents have. And that's what I've been. And to lose this over a tax? I don't know. We pay $25,000 for 25 minutes of fireworks. If we don't have that 25 minutes, it's not worth it to have a fireworks. But our, our Cedar Woolley Lager Rodeo voted to do the 25 minutes. So I just want you guys to realize that we work hard and we love our community. And we want you guys to help us keep this going. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie. Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name is Luke Lomsdale and I'm the owner of Old Timers in Cedar Woolley here. I apologize because I hate public speaking, but I feel compelled to be the voice for some of the younger business owners around here. And Lager Rodeo is awesome. I don't know what this ordinance will affect outside of that, but I know that that's an incredibly busy weekend for us. I know all the storefronts, all of the restaurants, shops are making a ton of extra money. I know the amount of tax money that's bringing in. If you guys lose that, over a few thousand dollars worth of extra money being paid out to cops and EMTs and firefighters, seems like that would be a negative. And you can't put a price on safety. Here in Cedar Woolley, you know that, like you said, we're number two in the state for safety. The locals are really good at policing the locals. Like, we don't, we don't have issues when it's Cedar Woolley people and Cedar Woolley doing stuff. But all the people who come here become an issue. And I don't think that you should put it on them to try to figure out how much they can afford to police because all you're going to do is take away from public safety. And then that's going to either drive people out of the town or make people not want to come. And we don't want to have incidents that they can look back and blame the city for not being responsible for the things that the, the city should be responsible for. And that's the public safety. So I implore you, just please figure something out so that you don't take away from the community because it's one of the biggest things that we have here is Lager Rodeo. And if they can't afford it, simply, we still need it. So I hope you guys can figure something else out. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Anyone else?
Hi there. So thank you guys so much for bringing this up. I don't know what other cities are doing, but I just wanted to say, as long as I've lived here, I've always loved the Lager Rodeo. And I don't know if I've ever missed one. The fireworks show is the highlight, in my opinion. I love it all, but, but I don't, I don't know if the doom and gloom, I don't understand the doom and gloom we have until next year, am I right? I just wanted to check my facts. I thought it was like October next year. And I feel like there's plenty of time to come up with a solution that would benefit everyone. As far as the amount of money that it might cost for security, I, if I understand right, that the security, the police and the fire are getting paid overtime possibly for those. And I don't know what the exact cost of all that is, but eventually, we have to pay it regardless of whether it's in our, the budget for the police and it comes out of our tax, it's our tax dollars or, you know, pay it this way or... But I feel like if we stepped up and volunteered more, I'd be willing to do that to help with security. I mean, of course, we're not trained to do that. But that or donations, there's plenty of time to have fundraisers. Of course, I think the entire county would stand behind doing huge fundraisers to support our Lager Rodeo. Of course, we can't, of course, I can't see it ever going away. Also, I remember going to see fireworks in, at Acme. And they would collect donations for the fireworks show as people are exiting for the next year. Just things like that. I mean, there's lots of ideas. We just have to brainstorm. I don't like hearing the no more Lager Rodeo. I don't think that's, I don't think that's what's happening here. I just think that we need to find a solution to fund the Lager Rodeo going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jermaine. Is anyone else? Okay, I'm hearing no one else. It is 7:23. I'm going to close public comment. And we are going to move right into, our next item is the Special Events Code discussion. And Charlie, you want to kick this off?
I'll lead it off and I'm sure others will get involved as we go. So when the message went out on social media, certainly, we heard a lot from council members. We heard a lot from community members, the mayor heard a lot. And we planned this follow-up discussion for tonight. And we wanted to make sure we had enough time to gather some additional cost information to provide to everybody. There's been some comments about this. The letter talks about an October 1st implementation of any kind of fees. So the reason why there are no fees on the application is there are no fees right now being charged. And to Councilmember Lavaca's point earlier, this was in the code previously. And it wasn't, it has not been implemented. But as we have now revised the code, we, we feel it's, it's pretty important for us to follow the code to the letter. There are other parts of city codes that aren't always enforced either. I don't know why this wasn't enforced, you know, years ago, but we, I think, either need to remove this section from the code or adjust the section of the code or find out, figure out how we're going to implement this section of the code. That puts staff in a tough spot when we have a code that, that we can't use. So that is my suggestion. We've got a lot of cost data for you. We did run costs on Lager Rodeo. We looked at the 2024 Lager Rodeo and then, and then used 2025 labor data to, to project that out. So you'll see the approximate cost is $21,000. There's a lot of additional sort of effort that we've tried to describe in here as well that goes into that. So that is what we would charge them if we were charging this year, which we are not in time for that event. And so that would be more like a next year kind of estimate if we, if we were moving forward on this current, current code. We also, and it took us a little bit longer to do this, but we pulled together information on other events as well. And so you have that tonight at the dais. It was submitted as late information and it's, it's on the website as well for anybody who wants to look at it. And Kelly can jump into this more, as can the directors, if there are questions specifically about operations. But the blast from the past, hopefully I'm looking at the right one here. No, I'm not, of course not. Thank you. Yeah, blast from the... Yeah, Christmas parade, $4,000. And blast from the past, $925. Just to give an order of magnitude to the conversation in terms of different events. You know, we can talk in terms of legal parameters and what we can and can't do. We've got our city attorney available for that. My suggestion for tonight is, we, we have time. Would be, we've heard from the community, to hear from the council and to maybe try to frame up some options for future discussion. If the council wants to look at different possibilities, you know, we could bring those back in a couple of weeks and start to work through those.
Okay. Open it up. I'm going to open it up. Councilman Henderson?
Yep, thank you. Mayor Johnson? So researching what other cities do, I happen to know pretty well because the City of Burlington sets aside money out of lodging tax to pay. We have a line item for fairs and festivals. And it, it comes out of, it's a coded line item that says lodging tax festival. And that's what you put your overtime into. Now, I'm not, I'm not too familiar with what we did with the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee this year, what our total balance was. I think it was somewhere around $29,000 or something like that. Or where was that?
I don't have that number. Well, actually, maybe I do. But just give me a moment.
Okay. I'll, I'll just keep talking then. So right now, for our overtime costs between these three events, Lager Rodeo is by far the most expensive at $10,841 of overtime. Now, if we look over to the straight, straight time cost, we're somewhere in the $14,128. So those are, those are workers at work doing their normal, normal job duties as assigned. The overtime is, is the expensive one that I think we should use lodging tax money for. The overtime is, is the expensive one that I think we should use lodging tax money for. And then Christmas parade, same thing, but it's exponentially less. And then blast from the past is even more so less, which surprises me. But so we're at $13,712. We have a new hotel in town. We're going to be gaining more lodging tax than we ever have before. So I think that, that, that needs to go into a pool where the city can use for our overtime, like some of the other cities are using. We just haven't had a lot of money before because we haven't had a nice, brand-new hotel in a long time. So that's something that I would recommend we look at. Did you find it, Kelly?
Yeah. So the ending balance for 2024 in the lodging tax fund was $79,000. We have budgeted $55,000 out of that, and project that the ending cash will be about $58,000. And that's just, we, we wanted to ensure that there was always enough money in there for the next year, so that we could use ending cash of the previous year to fund the current year, and that would just perpetually continue. So right now, at the end of the year, we project $58,000 in there. This year, we budgeted $55,000. It is hard to pinpoint exactly how much additional lodging tax the city will receive from that new hotel. We can, I mean, we're pretty confident that it will increase, but by how much?
Right.
We'll have to kind of wait and see as the year goes through. The other thing I just wanted to point out about lodging tax is that lod, just the process of how we allocate lodging tax. So the first, it goes, we form the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. People apply. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee reviews the applications, and then provides a recommendation for who's going to receive the funding and how much. And then the city council approves it. The city council, Nikki, if you can correct me, because I haven't looked at this, the detail of this in a couple months, the council can decrease awards, but they can't increase awards beyond what the Lodging Tax Committee has recommended. And they can't award something that the Lodging Tax Committee did not recommend. I mean, I just wanting to give that background. Nikki, did I get all of that correct?
Pretty close. You can't actually make an award that is different than what the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommends, unless you send it back to them first for their input on your proposed changes. And then if they don't, if they don't support the changes, you can then impose it the way that you want to. But you do have to send it back first, if you have a different idea. And municipalities are also able to apply for lodging tax themselves. And so you could apply for lodging tax to fund these expenses if you so chose.
So just wanted to provide that, that context. Our committee is made up of two people that represent organizations that might use lodging tax, and two representatives of people that collect it. So just, just keeping that in mind as we consider solutions.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation.
Councilman Burns?
First, I want to touch on something that was just talked about with the allocation of the lodging tax. So is Burlington, would, I know that you don't know this off the cuff, Kelly, but do you presume that they are just applying for their own funds? Or are they, do they have different rules that allow them to earmark it for something specifically?
They don't have different rules. It's a, it's a state law.
Okay, thank you. I kind of wanted to readdress the ordinance, something that other council members have said, that when we changed this, we were essentially reorganizing something that was pre-existing. And as has been said before, I help with the Lager Rodeo Grand Parade. I love it. My wife helps with it. I want to see it keep going. And I see that there is a public safety issue where we are kind of overtaxing our department. Every officer is working to make that happen and to keep it as safe as they can. And there's still holes to be plugged in that. We get less and less volunteers. You know, if it wasn't for the Syrians, the torsets, we wouldn't have anybody to run the parade. There wouldn't be a parade. So we need more community members to step up on that regard, to volunteer and help us keep it going. But I would like to see us try to find some solutions along the way that help take some of the burden off of our department directly, whether that be maybe inter-local agreement with Burlington, where we share officers for dairy days, they share officers for the Lager Rodeo, allow the opportunity for some of our officers, especially veterans, be able to take a vacation day on July 4th, and then rotate back into working at the next year, making it so that we're not doing quite as much overtime, maybe. You know, if we're pulling from those other departments and working with each other, maybe we can get that resource. When I touched on private security, emailing with, emailing with Dan there, sorry, lost my train there, it was not as desirable as having officers, obviously, for many reasons. So that's something I'd really like to see us look into. And I understand that will increase the cost a little bit, but I think the public safety is well worth it to ensure that we continue to have a good safety record with the parade and with the other events that go on in town. Looking at these numbers, I would really love to see us either utilizing the lodging tax or setting something aside financially, because I get a report with Lions Club on where the Lager Rodeo is at financially, and they've been struggling to cover that fireworks display, let alone to, to add to this. Because when I first read this ordinance, I just assumed this was baked into the cake, that they were already paying this and had been for decades. So now knowing that it's not something that has been paid and that they cannot afford, I have a hard time piling that on to them, knowing their financial situation. So I would love for us to find some other way to cover this. I'm open to ideas besides that, even if the council dips into our strategic fund for a year, or sets aside some dollars from that to cover if we don't have enough lodging tax, just to ensure that we still have the opportunity to have this parade year after year, and to make sure it's a safe event for everybody. I understand there's other events that are going on. We're hyper focusing on the Lager Rodeo because of the price. But my main goal is to continue to provide safety, not overtax the organizations that help make our community as unique as it is, and continue to provide the services that they need to, to do that.
Thank you. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. On this subject, I, I get a little frustrated because of the way that it was messaged, right? When we had this come before the council, it was never brought to us that this tax wasn't getting paid, and that's really what we're trying to aim to do, is collect a tax from the community that is already on the books, but isn't there. I think if we've been doing this the whole time, and nobody's been paying for it, then there should be a way to kind of figure this into our budget. And it brings in so much revenue. The Lager Rodeo, yeah, that's a high cost, 25 grand. For them, though, they are raising funds for that event. It's taking in tens of thousands of people to our community, and a lot of our community. The Veterans Parade doesn't necessarily do that. So they're working off a much smaller budget. So they, yeah, it doesn't cost them 25 grand, but it's still a significant portion of their budget, the same the way it is for the Lager Rodeo, or the Christmas Parade, or whatnot. Those are, those are small items for us if we're looking at $15,000 for an office, right? Those are items where we should be able to accommodate this. The strategic fund would be a good one if we were continuing to fund it. But we stopped funding it three years ago because we never used it. It had about 500 grand in it, and we just were using it to pay bills through, through requests from budget amendments. And so, and not getting used, it's not available. There is money in it for helping for this next year, but I think we should figure out a way to make it to where there, there is no, no cost in that parade. And I would also encourage, yeah, great, getting great ways, which are also creative, on raising more money to make it even better parade. But I don't think that, I think the city can, all the citizens enjoy it. I've been in all the parades, even, even the one that wasn't sanctioned by the city. It was one that were, we didn't have any, we had some police that were there just kind of keeping things calm. But it was the year after COVID, so there was really no reason to shut down the longest-running parade. And citizens just came together and said, let's throw a parade. And they did a parade. And it went really well. The streets were packed. And so, yeah, I don't think that even if, even if anything from this came down, people would stop coming. People want to come. They live here. They enjoy this place. They've already paid their dues. We should figure out a way to make it for, for them. That would be my, my two cents on it. I got to say, the messaging on this was horrible, was absolutely horrible. It's embarrassing to the city to roll this out and kind of have in the background that, oh yeah, we're going to start charging you guys a large amount. And if, if I got a bill for 25,000, even if I have $150,000 budget for a parade, or 100,000 budget for a parade, I would still be like sticker shock. Whoa, that's a lot of money. Wait a second, can we discuss this? So versus just rolling it out, now you guys are going to have to pay this on social media. There should have been big discussion within the council on that topic, and then getting the, the necessary parties on board to see, how does this affect you? What can we do? What is the lodging tax? This shouldn't have been to this elevation. And so that's, that's my two cents on that whole thing. If we ever do this messaging, again, we should definitely figure out how to do it more appropriately, not bring shock and all.
Councilman Cock?
Yes, I just think this is a good opportunity to hear from the community on this topic. The Lager Rodeo and other similar events are part of the fabric of our community, and they need to be supported. I really think that the lodging tax is created exactly for these events, and is an appropriate source of funding. On the other hand, I also don't want to penalize the events and say, oh, last year, we gave you 20, now we're going to give you 10. I think we should look at how we can make it so there's no effect on their funding, since they're already struggling with funding. And it seems to me that the lodging tax is the appropriate way to do this, because, you know, if you're short on volunteers, I, I can't see anybody, too many people volunteering besides Jermaine for security. And if you, if you talk to, you know, Dan or any police, they don't want private security. It's, there's all kinds of issues with that. So I'm very in support of sort of pausing on this as we discuss it, take no further action. It doesn't go into effect until October, and then come up with a, a better solution for our community and for our events. Because, you know, we all love the Lager Rodeo and all the events, and we need to support them, not make it difficult. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns, you?
Yeah, I was actually going to make a request that if something else like this should come up where the city hasn't necessarily been following along with the code, we re-codify it, change, make a small change, might not realize that this is going to occur. Maybe give us a heads up, let us discuss, and just say, hey, you know, we haven't actually been enforcing this. Do you, how do you feel about proceeding? So that we have a chance to kind of consider it a little differently. I'd really appreciate that, just because the optics of it, if nothing else, to, to give us that ability to discuss it and consider further what happens. I did forget to make one more point. If anyone who I saw on social media wants to volunteer this year, who said they were going to, go to cedarwoollylions.com, look for a purple bar that says volunteer for the Lager Rodeo Parade. We'd be happy to have you. We'll put you to work on one of the roads, or help and keep traffic going where the officers can't fill in.
I even volunteered one year.
Nice, thank you.
Omitted the parade. Wait. Councilwoman Diamond?
So when this came forward to me, and constituents were standing on my doorstep, I also had no idea that this had gone out on social media in the context that it did. Well, with very little context, basically, a cover letter. And in discussing it with them, and going back and looking at the last council meeting, it was clearly stated that it was, there was, there was looking to be actually no change to the ordinance in regards to overtime and fees. But in fact, what was left out, and what was left out to the public is the fact that it was never actually enforced. So this existed, but it was never enforced by the city. And instead, that pushback was pushed back on council to make it look as if we were going to shut down the parade. And that is in fact not the case, right? Everybody up here loves the parade. Everybody has been a part of the community in one way or another. I live on the parade route. My family has owned a business on Metcalf Street for almost 70 years that my grandfather built, and that business is still there. I have, we, I don't think there's a single person up here that wishes to see that go away. We have family and friends that are a part of the police and fire, and volunteer and do for the parade and for the events that go on. And nobody has any ill will to take that away. Councilmember Henderson actually went on record and stated that he wanted to make sure there was no hindering to anybody from doing any sort of parade or festival, or participating in such. And it was, and it was stated that, no, that in fact would not be happening. We were trying to make things easy. The focus of the actual, focal, focus and content of the actual conversation was more about some language and some, some verbiage about the impact on private property requiring use of services and costs of our police and fire services. But in doing so, reiterated the fact that these events have been going on, and the codes had never actually been enforced. So unbeknownst to us at council, because that was never advised, that, that was never paid, seeing this come through with people, friends and family severely upset about this, was, was incredibly upsetting. And I think it was misleading, and, and a very bad misrepresentation of what the council actually would like for the city. We want this stuff to happen. I, speaking for myself, I do. I want to see that parade go by. I want family and friends to come into town. I want to see our businesses thriving. I want to see the joy and the community coming together, because that's what it really does. It brings everybody together when they come into town. Almost everybody is happy. And one of the members out here was absolutely right when he stated that it's not our community that creates additional issues. Sometimes it's people coming into town where we need the additional help with our police and fire and stuff. Our community is wonderful about looking out for each other and caring for each other. Businesses looking out for businesses, neighbors looking out for neighbors. And I think we could probably all agree to that. So I just wanted to be very clear about the fact that there was a very big misconception in the way that it was presented. So moving forward, for, from my perspective, I would like to see the administration go forward with recommending, and recommending that the city of Cedar Woolly actually apply for the lodging tax from the Lodging Tax Committee in the future. And if we can have somebody go through and kind of earmark, we've started with earmark of these main festivals and events. And if there's any other ones that seem to be, you know, continual, regular ones that come through, what that could cost, and then we can roll that into the following, the following year after this is administered. If the, has the Lodging Tax Committee, when do they meet? Next?
Fall of the year.
In the fall?
Fall of the year.
Okay. So if that's able to move into the fall, that would, that's what I would prefer to see, moving forward. If there is, for whatever reason, knocked the funds from that, like Councilmember Lavaca mentioned, we do have some strategic funds left. It is not building anything because we stopped funding that, but we do have enough to get us through a year if we needed to wait on that in order to then push through with, with the Lodging Committee and, and being able to make that overtime code and change in, in process. So if we can look into that and try to make, make that change, that would be ideal, because these events do bring in a lot of great people and revenue and sales tax into our city. And even more so, it gives our community something to look forward to, and hope, and all the fun things that come with that. And the Christmas parade, too. I mean, the, the outpour of people, when it was suggested that we should not have the town Christmas tree, the outpour of people I had that were absolutely irate and thought that that was the worst thing that the city could possibly do, was crazy. And I fully agree with them. I would, I would never, ever vote to take that away from anybody in our community. And so I think as a city, we need to protect that. We need to protect, I mean, it says "home of the Lager Rodeo" on our sign. So we need to find a way. Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
Yep, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, so piggybacking off of that, and interestingly enough, we had a budget amendment conversation this evening too. For, for this particular application, would we not, would we not be prudent to partner with some of the different events that are actually crucial to the city's economy? Like Lager Rodeo, blast from the past, city does well. You know, Christmas parade, we have thousands and thousands of people in town eating dinner and then watching the parade afterwards. Would it, and even sitting down with some of the stakeholders, did we sit down with any of the stakeholders before we changed this code? Did, did we have like anybody come in that we talked to?
We had some conversations to the Chamber of Commerce. We, we did not, um, in, in terms of the fees portion of this, uh, we had some brief conversations with them as well. Uh, but no, beyond that, no, we did not.
Cause it, even if, even if we repealed section 1244070 and put it back to the original, it would be slightly better based on the fact that it, it says, the chief of police may require any reasonable and necessary traffic control, blah, blah, blah. You, we've all read it. Um, and then coming down to where it, where it's uh, the new section 070, um, it's a lot, it's a lot broader to kind of any costs incurred through overtime. Um, not just, not just if the chief deems necessary that he wants more officers here than, you know, they may have to pay it. And I think, I think that that's where the different, differentiation between how the code was forever is, the chief probably just said, yeah, we're good. Or, you know, we'll have, we'll have some guys come in. We, we got it covered. But now it's, it's a little bit more city service. It's more global, right? As far as what our city services are. So.
Can I make, can I make one clarification?
Yes, go ahead Nikki.
The old ordinance, um, also in 040 required um, uh, additional police or fire protection or work from the street department or solid waste department or other city department.
All right, let me scroll here for a second. Anyways, uh, let me finish my thought though. Um, so, so if we're partnering with these events like the chamber, like Lager Rodeo, people who are trying to bolster our economy, wouldn't that be something that we could put in a, a budget amendment in the future to help offset these costs? Because we have a couple of different ways of paying for it. We have ARPA funds which will run out. We have strategic funds which will run out because those, those funds aren't replenished. So those are, those are one time, that's cash that just goes out and it never, it never comes back. Um, lodging tax, if we have more lodging tax coming in, what a great opportunity for some of these groups in town to be able to get more money. So if, if we look at a partnership, offset these costs a little bit in our upcoming budget amendments for, you know, recreation or whatever line item we put for our city in there to help say, okay, you know, $13,000, right, per year. That's less than the office that y'all want to build, right? And you just build that in to every year and you, we keep going with it that way. That's the, I think that that's the financially prudent way to do it because then we're not, then we're not exhausting one-time funds and then trying to think, how do we do it next year? And then how do we do it the year after that? Fundraising's still good. Um, I love fundraising. Uh, we did some fundraising this year. Uh, Dottie, you and your crew, you guys, you guys were a lot of fun to have. You know, twice. It was great. Love it. Um, but to, to come up with the additional costs incurred, I think, I think what we need to do is as a city, we just need to step up and say, these are, these are crucial events to our economy. And we go from there.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Kestie, oh, Kelly?
I was just gonna comment on the budget. Um, and something else council brought up that, in this, when we went to implement the budget, the new ordinance um, that was passed by city council, that's when we discovered that we have not been following the Cedar Wully municipal code. And that, as Charlie pointed out, we are required to follow Cedar Wully code. We have not, all these, the, the cost of um, overtime and staffing for these events is currently included in the budgeted expenditures. They are not in addition, there's not an additional, um, additional cost outside of what we have already budgeted. The overtime line items in the budget include that estimated cost. So just want to be clear about that, that it won't be additional costs outside of what we already budget.
So we're talking about not charging these people anymore this whole time?
That we're, that the municipal code requires us to recover our costs. And that in all the previous budgets, including this budget, the cost of employee salaries is estimated in the budget, in all previous budgets.
So how do we cut that out of the code to where if we're already, we've already just been putting this money aside, right, all these years? And I mean, it makes sense, right? I mean, we're not gonna, we're not just gonna have this massive overtime shortfall with the police department and, you know, every year and how do we pay for it, right? So we, so we've been setting that money aside. So it should be a lot easier than what we're trying to figure out right now, right? It should be way easier than that.
Well, just that, I think at the beginning Charlie pointed out, you know, that there's multiple different, different avenues. To how.
Kelly, can I jump in too?
Yes.
I think it's a little more complicated than, um, than maybe what we're talking about right now. So, I mean, what we start with first is this idea of gifting of public funds, right? Um, we have to ensure that our taxpayers are not paying for things that aren't, um, that don't have a public purpose, right? So when we're talking about these bigger events, I think that everyone can easily say, there's a public purpose, right? There's an economic development purpose um, to these larger events. And um, there, there isn't the question of gifting of public funds. But not all special events, and quite frankly, probably most special events are not big economic drivers, right? They could be, um, you know, a smaller event with 100 people, uh, a block party, right? And so then, um, if there are services required in the form of, you know, additional trash service or um, public work shutting down a street or something like that, um, it's hard to then say that we shouldn't recoup the costs that are associated with that event. So it's not quite as simple as we should just get rid of the requirement to recoup the city's costs. It's more of an analysis of, okay, we've got some bigger events that are an economic driver and that we want to encourage and therefore, um, you know, we can see an avenue for recouping our costs through lodging tax. But then what about these other events?
Well, that makes sense Nikki. I, I appreciate that you brought that up. And so I guess we need to identify what, what the threshold is for an economic driving event, right? I mean, you know, you could have.
That's where it's complicated.
But, but at the same time, you're looking at these smaller events like, you know, the high school baseball team goes to state and they need to shut down the road for 20 minutes, you know, to do that stuff. So that's where we can offset the costs with lodging tax money. We can keep a little bit for ourselves to help offset those costs because we don't know if our baseball team's gonna go to state every year or not, right? We hope they do, but um, but then we, we look at these economic driving events and that's not gifting of public funds because we're, the cities, we're making money as a city off of that stuff. So that's.
And that's why I like your lodging tax suggestion. Because in the lodging tax advisory committee process, those um, individuals have to say, yes, there's going to be um, an economic driver to this event. And so yes, we're going to authorize the use of these funds. Whereas the smaller events that are maybe more for personal reasons, wouldn't have that same, wouldn't be able to show the same kind of level of proof that a lodging tax advisory committee would need to see.
But at the same time, we need to make sure that that money's going to these different groups that they can put on the events that they want to put on. So it, it's, it's a balance. So I think we need to identify what as a city, we would, we would identify as an ec, an economic, economic driving event and then work it down from there um, before October 1st, right? And so we can, we can get it right.
And um, one thing that Nikki pointed out about the uh, lodging tax is it does have very specific, um, that you can only spend it on specific things. Mostly, it's designed to attract tourism. And one thing that's often said about uh, lodging taxes, heads in beds. So bringing people into the city who stay at hotels, who um, you know, shop in economic development. So that needs to be considered with events that do not bring in, that is not a tourist attraction, that doesn't bring people into our, our community for economic development, as Nikki said, would not qualify for the lodging tax. So the example of a, you know, someone welcoming in uh, their sports um, champions or team or whatever, um, may not qualify for lodging tax.
All right, well, we need to rework it, I think. I think we need to rework it, so. I'll yield back to you.
Just a quick uh, observation that, um, you know, I, we certainly need to encourage our Lager Rodeo and our local folks to apply for, uh, you know, in the future for the lodging tax advisory committee and try to get that funding. But I would still, in whatever we rework this, uh, and uh, Councilman Henderson talked about it. I think, or at least mentioned the old ordinance, I think we need to leave some discretion for the police chief, um, on whether we need police and security. Because I'm talking about something is unforeseen. A group that comes in and wants to protest and we're not thrilled by it, but it could require more security. So I think we need to leave language like that in there somehow. Um, or even maybe we will be thrilled by it, but they still might need more security. So I, you know, I trust Dan's judgment on this and I think it would be important to include that in there.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. Um, first, I want to thank everyone in the audience for coming today. It's very nice to see people come and engage in what's going on. And I'm sorry that this caused such a stir for everybody and an upset. I too was very upset by it. And I want to thank you guys for all your hard work and what you do for our city and the different businesses that I see in here coming out. I, I don't think it is this difficult. And there used to be a time when we did have a, a council reserve and that money was put aside and we were able to um, do special projects and the, the council was able to be engaged in the community. And that stopped getting funded. And we do have a balance in there. And um, if these are city sanctioned events, Lager Rodeo, Christmas Parade, Blast From The Past, those to me that are economic um, building events, I would love nothing more than to see um, that money that's sitting there that we can't use for projects on something that is going to help our community. And if we can't figure it out, these are city sanctioned events. If we have to say that we're putting it on as the city and these are the people that are leading the way for these events in order to go around legal matters, I would love to use this funding for that. It's sitting there. It's being used to pay bills that if we're smart with our money and not doing $15,000 on, you know, cubicles, I think we could make it work. So I 100% appreciate every one of the council members up here. And um, and I, and I hope that we can make something go of this. And I would, um, I don't know if a motion needs to be made to repeal what had been said. If, what, what do we need to do in order to make sure that this actually happens and goes through? What, where are we at now, Charlie?
Yeah, we have a little bit of time here still, you know, and, and October could be pushed back if we needed to do that. If we, if we were running low on time. But my suggestion would be, I'm hearing a couple of themes in the conversation. One is potential use of the lodging tax funds. And so I, I think it'd be wise for us to maybe bring back a report on how we've spent lodging tax funds the last few years and um, look at the revenue growth in that fund. Um, we don't really know how much this new uh, hotel may bring in, but it's going to bring in more. We just don't know how much, assuming nobody else drops. Uh, there could be some funding available there. And we could work on a strategy that would look at, you know, making sure that we sustain these events without imposing uh, anything um, in the short term and until maybe that LTAC balance does bump up to a point where we can replace a lot of the overtime money we have in the budget with, with LTAC funds. So my suggestion would be a briefing on LTAC, um, looking at some code changes based on the council's conversation night as well. So we could bring a draft of that back to you. And then uh, you could have further discussion or we could even propose some ideas to you about, you know, how to kind of sustain things in the short run. So whether, whether we use strategic funds or, or some other source.
I think something else that was brought up that I think the council may like to discuss and that has to do with those events that actually drive the economic funding. I think that was something I heard a couple of council members say.
I, I, I think that's important. I think that um, the, what Charlie said is absolutely on point. But then um, if you're going to be looking at funding sources, I think the first, one of the first questions is, which of the events are actually um, economic drivers? Because again, you do have a gifting of public funds concern if you decide just not to charge for any event. And again, you could have events that are private events that would fall under a, a special event permit.
Right. Uh, yeah, so going back to what I was saying, I do think that that is important to do that, to identify those events. And um, then also with that, those would probably be the events that we would really like to put at the top of whatever funding we're using, whether that be the strategic fund or whether it be the um, lodging tax or whatever else we may come up with creatively. I thought I sent another light. Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so on the, with the lodging tax, if we have a lot of people that go to that and they apply for it, is it possible that, um, if we're solely relying on that, that a parade goes to apply and now it's no longer got the funding for it? And then we've got to figure out another way to do it. So that would be a question to make sure that we do have that consistency. What if that hotel does close down or another one closes down? We saw the um, you know, the events that we've seen through, we've only missed one parade for Lager Rodeo in the last, you know, well over 100 years, 1897, I think, right? Um, and it was for COVID, but that second year we wouldn't have had it and then that would have kind of broken a, a chain. So how do we make it to where if there is a downturn in the economy, if something like that happens? A lot of people came out. It does bring the community together, so making sure we do fund this thing. But also, you know, maybe looking back at the last seven years or 10 years, how many parades have we've had that have been like three or more throughout those last 10 years? Most are consistent every year, but are we opening up a door for parades every weekend all of a sudden? And that they're gonna have this taxes paid? So um, something to look at. I know that the Veterans Parade is, is awesome. Um, and I know people that work on that. And so if that's not driving the economy by bringing a lot of people from out of town here, putting beds in, or heads in beds, does that drop off the list when, when they actually need the funding themselves, you know? So how do we kind of work that out? The media side, I don't know if we, if we can go back and it, when you guys drew up the bill or when we, we drafted the ordinance or brought it before council, was there any understanding that this tax wasn't getting paid?
I don't recall having a conversation about it. We were focused on, you know, the edits to the code itself at that time.
Yeah.
Kelly said, you know, we went back to start to implement this. We, we realized we had to do a lot more.
It, it never came up in the, in the council for, for that meeting or something that we had thought about. So um, maybe something to make that correction on the social media that it wasn't the council passing a tax on the events all of a sudden, right? That would be, that would be, I think, appreciated from the council in general. That, there was articles, media articles that were in, and Mayor, I think you were interviewed, and one of those or two of them. And so making that, that correction, that redaction, say, yeah, this, this wasn't the case. This is actually kind of what took place. I think that would be appreciated.
Councilman Burns?
Question for Nikki. Um, you said that it would be gifting of public funds if we just paid for it, is that right?
No, I didn't, um, I didn't say it would be gifting of public funds if we just paid for some of the bigger events, right? The concern is gifting of public funds. Um, if there isn't a public benefit, us contributing monies to say, private special events would be a gifting of public. would be a gifting of public funds, right? It would be the public utilizing its resources to fund private events. The bigger events that we've been talking about, like Lager Rodeo, you can make a very strong argument that there is a public benefit because there's an economic benefit, there's a social benefit. There's all of these things that the public would be supportive of using its funds for. So I, I don't worry about the larger events. I worry about the smaller events that aren't necessarily providing a demonstrable public benefit that then would potentially raise gifting of public funds concerns if we were to fund those.
When you say the smaller events, are you talking about somebody having a ginormous barbecue? Or are you talking about somebody having a small parade?
Like a block party, you know? A block party would be something that would theoretically qualify for a special event. If you're going to have more than 50 people, that would theoretically qualify as a special event. Roads are going to be closed down. Again, if you have additional need for solid waste services or public works to go shut down the street and then reopen the street, those types of costs wouldn't be something that the public should be paying for because that is a benefit only to a, a private event, basically.
So we would be able to change the ordinance to say that the city covers the costs incurred from parades and then list off other events that might not be necessarily parades, like the fireworks on the Fourth of July that are covered by the city? And then all else incurs the cost, is that?
So there's, I mean, that's, I think, a good suggestion is to identify those events that you believe have, provide a public benefit. Identify those in the code and say that the costs associated with these events to the city and its departments will be covered either by an application to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to fund those costs or by economic development funds. But I think that you would want to identify which ones had the benefit associated with them.
Okay. My only concern with identifying directly in that way is that someone's going to come to us and say, oh, you left us out. You're, you're prejudiced against our group, A, B, or C.
I, I agree, that's the risk.
Okay, thank you.
But as, we do know that we do have time to do that, and like I said, we can push back. One moment, please. So it is 8:11, and usually we do wrap up by 8 o'clock. That's in our code. And if there are no objections, I suggest that we move forward and try to conclude by 9 o'clock. How does that sound?
I say we stay until it's done.
Till it's done, okay. All right. So, go ahead.
Yes. In our code, don't we have specific events that are, are covered by our code, community events?
Not in this specific context.
In our code, somewhere within our, wouldn't that then make it be part of here? Maybe it just wasn't. You guys are rewriting a lot of stuff, is it within somewhere in the code?
We do, we do point out certain events in different sections of the code, like the facility rentals. And I can't think of the, the specific language in those codes. But not in this specific municipal code.
Is Lager Rodeo not one of them? Like, are they not?
We do, we do, we do give them funding from the lodging tax, is that what you're thinking of?
No.
No?
No, I'm thinking in our special events, they're sanctioned by our codes. Is that, is that not one of them? So that it, it's circumvents the problems with gifting of funds or anything like that because they are part of our code. It's a city sanctioned event.
I don't think we label things specifically in the code as a city sanctioned event. I, I do believe there is something in the code about facility reservations and that the Lager Rodeo may be referenced there. But without looking at it, I couldn't give the specific details.
Not to single out one specific, but if we are home of the Lager Rodeo and it is, you know, city sanctioned, I don't think that we should have to do much work in, in providing the funding for that. And is there a way that if it's not in the code, we could put it in the code? Or is by a special event that is by the city?
Yeah, as, as Nikki pointed out, that is a possibility. We would likely want to make it so we can evenly apply to all individual, all organizations who apply. So not necessarily that every organization that applies would fall under it, but that we have some sort of designation for how we determine, determine that clearly outlined. As Nikki pointed out, and I believe Councilman Burns, that we wouldn't want to be seen as favoring any, anything outside of, we wouldn't want to be favoring any specific group.
I think that's kind of the heart of our community, that and our Christmas tree. I can't think of two more important things, so I would really like to see that.
Councilwoman Henderson?
I'm good.
Okay.
I got my question answered. Other, actually, Nikki, you, you said something, we were talking. Councilman Burns brought up the point of his, his previous point. And so what I kind of got out of that was the private events that are a special event don't benefit the public at all. So those, so like a private event shouldn't really be open to getting like anything, right? I mean.
Unless it's open to the public and provides some form of identifiable benefit to the public, right?
Right, so can we just kick?
That's your question.
Can we just kick block parties right out of the code? Because a block party only is for, you know, me and my neighbors. And if we're shutting, shutting roads down, then why should we get any funding for, you know, anything, right?
No, I agree, but we still want to, I mean, we'd still want to keep them within the definition of special event because we want them to ask for permission to have those larger events if it's going to impact city services.
Right, but not funding eligible, because then that would be gifting of public funds. So.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Nikki, real quickly, so in the past, there's been, for example, one of the roads shut down because there was first a local bar that wanted to have a band in the middle of the street for its little block party. Because that is a business itself, and people were coming in, but it only actually benefited the one business that was open on that street at that time of the evening. Would that then be, I would assume that would be considered a special event, but then would fall in the category of needing to be paying the fees? Is that correct?
So that's a really great question. Typically, when you see expansion of use of an existing business, that usually falls under some sort of like right-of-way use permit or, you know, a temporary, a temporary outdoor seating permit of some sort. Usually, existing businesses that want to expand their footprint for a night aren't, aren't utilizing a special event permit. They're usually using something different.
Okay, thank you.
Often like a right-of-way use permit.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Lloyd, did you have any thoughts or comments?
Well, you're, you're going to have income problems all the time. I'm sitting here thinking about, well, this year you're going to do this, next year, flip a coin, we're going to do that because it's not going to be the same. But I'm kind, I'm kind of guilty, I'm sitting here, I'm thinking about a different subject. Because I'm thinking business, I'm thinking promotion, thinking Lager Rodeo. Well, my suggestion, in, in addition to worrying about how to pay this other stuff. But my suggestion to Lager Rodeo would be, look for, look for new sources to come from. Bring in new, new acts or, you know, start changing things around and see, see if you can attract more money, more people. Because if you do the same thing year after year after year after year after year, that's where you end up. But that's what, I've been sitting here thinking promotions. This, this way, that way, you could do this, could do that. So in addition to what you're talking about tonight, that, that's where I'm stuck is suggesting, you know, innovation. Different, a little different in the future. And you don't have to take away the good stuff you got now, but you can add stuff, change things, and let, let it go with that. So that's what I've been thinking about, kind of off-subject.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so if there are not any more comments, we'll close this particular agenda item and move on to our new business. Under that, item number one is a contract supplement, number four. It's with Reichert and EB Engineering. This has to do with Township Street and SR9 and the John Liner and McGargyle intersection improvements. So Director Bullock?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. So as I mentioned earlier in this council meeting, that we are opening bids for the roundabout project tomorrow. This is a contract amendment with Reichert and EB, who is the current designer of the project, to provide the construction management services for inspection and testing and, and just the general construction management of the project. Couple pieces to note is that, let's see here. So our funding is through the Transportation Improvement Board. It's an 80% match, 20% local funds. And currently, within their proposal for the contract amount is within the amount TIB is granting us for this specific activity for construction management, so we're good there. The other thing I also alluded to earlier is that I feel very lucky with the bid we received for the, for the pavement overlay program this summer. Part of this is because kind of the word on the street is that there are some engineers' estimates that have been under, that bids have, have come in in other cities far beyond what the engineers' estimate was. And that's just the economic kind of crazy situation we're in. So I, I was over the moon happy with, with our bid. But what we've done is I've coordinated with TIB as well. And right now, because of that, TIB is willing to escalate up to 15% if we get high bids for that. The other thing we've done, so, so they're willing to give us more funding if we need it, up to a certain amount, which is a good safety net for us. And then we've also applied for the economic development grant cycle for an additional $500,000 to this project. So right now, our, out of $4,255,000 for the entire project design, right-of-way acquisition to construction, our share of that would be about $850,000. And so by getting, we, Mark had gotten a $250,000 economic development grant to cover some of the local match with, presuming we, we may very well get funded for the additional 500. That reduces out of our city funds to about $100,000 instead of $850,000 to make the match for this project. So I feel real confident that this is well within our capabilities to accomplish this summer. So with that, if I could get a motion to approve Reichert and EB for construction management, we will probably likely start construction of this project just in a couple months, so.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Well, first I wanted, that's fine, okay. But I was going to open it up to questions.
I'm sorry.
If, at all. Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Kestie.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this, but I just wanted to say, as somebody who lives in the ward, that this is going to, you know, impact greatly. Where are we at with a possible light and no left turn out of North Reed? For when this is all, are we thinking about that at all for when everyone's going to come down SAP? Just, if someday we could see something of what that might cost us or where that's going to fit in, I'd really like to know that the people are not going to have to try and take a left and then back up all the way through SAP on North Reed.
Right, for, for detour.
Yes, yes, because that's going to be miserable.
Right. For something like this, basically what we'd do is have a temporary signal.
And that's, okay, and that's within budget of whatever this, all this scope is? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
That, that's what you do when you have this, sorry, I didn't quite. But yes, we, we, there will be a portion of this project where we detour local traffic around SAP, down North Reed, to, to get around, especially when we're doing the concrete work and those things get damaged by traffic. Yes, that's part of what you would do to do that. And that's what we plan on doing.
And no left turn potentially?
Well.
That would be a nightmare.
Well, yeah, it would be a, a traffic light that would stop traffic on Highway 20 and stop traffic on. It's a portable traffic light, it's not a permanent one. But, you know, we do, we do that, especially for when you have one-way bridges and things like that. You know, you, people many times have seen the portable traffic lights. You know, that stop traffic one way, go one way on the bridge, they stop traffic and go the other.
Thank you. That'll be the best part of this whole thing.
And then another piece of this is as we do the concrete work on the roundabout, because that is where we don't want it damaged, and it makes things very tight. We have permission from Washdott to detour all the trucking in Bellingham out to I-5 and then back down Highway 20. So there's going to be about a two or three week period where all traffic's detoured, including the trucks. So that way we can get the concrete cured and, and not break anything on a brand-new roundabout. So we, we have a rather complex traffic control plan on this project because it deserves that complexity.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
And Councilman Lloyd, I see you have your light on, do you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm.
I didn't turn it off before.
Wanted to confirm, I looked down there and I saw it was on. So Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you very much. And Bill, thank you very much for working on this and working with TIB to make sure that we can get that cost increase, that grant increase. I know that's important. We're on a bit of a tight, a tight budget, as we talked about earlier. So, and this is a pretty important project to finish out before school starts. And so if we do have, is there a chance that it could run much higher? I mean, usually our bids go pretty good, but I know that it's hard to predict the future. But is this a reality that we got to look at?
So, I mean, this is also a late-season bid, and just like our paving project was this year. And many times, late-season bids are quite a bit higher than there if you go out to bid in January, which for various reasons, working through the Washdott permitting process and approval process, we ended up having to bid it in April. So what will happen is based, if the bids do come in at an extent where it is unaffordable at this time, I will likely come back with a recommendation, reject all bids, and then we'll rebuild, rebid it in December and build it next year.
Okay, so it'd just be a delay of project for probably?
Yeah, and there's options. These are not uncommon solutions when you have an unexpected bidding environment. But, right, but if you ask me like Monday, I would tell you that, you know, we have a pretty fair chance of hitting that situation. Now that I've seen our current bids come in, I'm, I'm, I'm now optimistic all of a sudden that we should get reasonable bids because, and we, and we had six bidders on the paving project, which is actually more than I expected this late in the season. So I expect we'll have a pretty healthy bidding environment. And if things hold true like they did yesterday, we should be able to get this project within our predicted budget even, so. But, but it, it's always prudent to cover your bases and, and be conservative when you get into something like this. So I really kind of don't know, but I feel more confident with the way that it has been coming in locally over the last three weeks, so.
Yeah, and I know we got a lot of, a lot of big projects going on, Homestead Park and various others. On the Jones-John Liner connection, that's going to tie into that roundabout eventually. When, when do you foresee that road being opened up and actually drivable?
Okay, so a couple of different projects to answer that. One, we have the Jones-John Liner rail, or, yeah, sorry, all these things sound the same with the titles, so forgive me. The Jones-John Liner Railroad Undercrossing Project, which is the linchpin for this entire corridor. That's the one that we're, that goes under, will have a new access underneath the railroad, because they're an elevated railroad there. That has to go first, and we're striving really hard to get that built next year in 2026. Could go into 2027, is part of that, you never know what's going to happen when you negotiate with the railroad, whatever. But that project has to be built before the John Liner arterial project that goes from this roundabout to Reed Street. And the reason for that is stormwater, so. So, stormwater goes downhill, it has to go through the Jones-John Lainer Undercrossing Project, so I've got to build that one first and then build John Lainer Arterial Project the following year, so that, so, the road undercrossing potential goes 26, 27, and then, the connection between the two, the Arterial Project, would go either 27 or 28 based on timing.
Okay. And then, so for the roundabout, that would be okay, I guess, at that point, if we have to push it out till 2026, because we'd have capability. Traffic is getting pretty tight around town, obviously, and, you know, so I'm glad that it's moving forward, I think it should alleviate some...
These dominoes are all part of a master plan that seems to be clicking so far, but yes, those, we have some, what I'd call contingencies, play in the contingency to allow some of these different dominoes to fall one after the other and get delayed a little bit without really impacting the functionality of everything we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Councilman Cox?
Just a quick clarification, so, even if the railroad drags their feet, we can still, which is not unforeseen, we can still move forward with the McGargyle Township Roundabout, right?
Yes, most certainly.
Because the parents are, I hear from them constantly on this, that it's, you know, even though, you know, the school district did put in that extra drive and that helped, but it's still lined up every school day, so...
All three of these are critical projects for getting this stuff done, but, yeah, that's part of the give and take, we've planned into the sequencing of all these projects, so they really don't get held up significantly.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Burns.
I think you beat me to the punch, but I was going to make a motion, so if Councilman Allen had more...
I do have a motion, it's by Cox, did you want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Burns, Anderson, sorry.
I'm ready to go. I'm ready to vote.
Perfect. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Cox, seconded by Councilman Burns, and this motion is to amend the professional services agreed with Reichert and EB Engineering, R&amp;E, to cover construction and management services required for the Township Street and SR9 and John Lainer Road, McGargyle Road intersection. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Thank you, Council, motion carries. Moving on to item number two, this has to do with the comp plan update, this is draft, chapter one, introduction, and Director Thomas Glover is going to be handling this.
Great, good evening again, Mayor and Council. So, this evening, we are going to take a look at chapters one, two, and three, the drafts, these are, excuse me, these are drafts of those chapters, this is all part of the comp plan. The first one concerns the introduction, chapter one, introduction to the plan. The second one is the land use element, which you have seen before, it's, you saw it one time, it went to council, I mean, excuse me, to Planning Commission with feedback from council, so it's back here again to give you another opportunity to take a look at that, or ask us any questions, or make suggestions for changes. And then, the third chapter is the housing element, and so, this is being introduced to you at this time, following Planning Commission's review on May 6th. So, with us tonight is Donna Keeler, she's already there at the microphone. Donna, thank you for sitting through this part of the council up to this point, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Council, and Mayor, for having me again tonight. I'll be presenting with Matt Covert, who's here online virtually, he's sorry, was not able to attend in person. And I'll start with discussing the revisions to the introduction to the comp plan, which is chapter one, and also, a second review of the land use chapter that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, and then Matt will talk about the revisions, draft revisions to chap, the next, housing chapter. So, Woody, do you have the PowerPoint that I sent over? Great, thank you, can you move on to the next one? As I mentioned tonight, I'll be discussing changes to the format or the look of the comprehensive plan, and also, some changes to chapter one, which is a vision and introduction. From there, the land use, housing, and then we'll have time for questions. I know it's been a long night for you, so, next. So, here you can see the design on the right, or at least my right, is what we're proposing, but, and the one on the left is the existing cover. And since we submitted this, we've had a offer by one of your employees to do some, who does artwork, Nicole, to potentially come up with a design. I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about it, Nicole, or?
You want me to?
Yeah, just, just a little bit, so, it's a really cool, in my view, idea, I think it'll give it a really special, personal touch.
So, not a lot of you know this, but I do specialize in charcoal art commissions, so the thought would be generally to stick with the same theme. I want to really emphasize the historic background to Sedra Woolley, so, I'm kind of still playing around with a few ideas, but it would be kind of on sepia-tone paper, charcoal art, give it a really nice aged look, feel to it. I'm thinking of doing circa 1930 logger rodeo scene of downtown Sedra Woolley, lots of smiling faces and riders on horseback kind of coming through downtown waving at folks while the whole event's in motion. That's kind of the thought I'm going with, but if anyone wants to come and talk to me and see some of my artwork, I'm happy to share.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thanks, Woody, can you move on to the next one? Another change that we're going to be doing is implementing kind of a color theme to them, for each chapter, we'll have a separate color, we'll have to make sure, the Planning Commission actually brought this up, that it's ADA compliant, so we'll make sure that happens. And we're open to, these are the just colors that we came up with, but if there's any special color that you want for each chapter, let me know. Other format changes that we're doing is currently, you have, the existing plan has two columns, there aren't a lot of graphics to it, a little difficult to read, we're changing it to a single, more wider column, and with images or graphs or different graphics on the right-hand side. And in this chapter two, we're going to incorporate your, the new vision statement that you approved in here as part of it, and then the other vision statements that were in, are in the existing plan, there's like sub-vision statements, they're going to be moved into each element of the comprehensive plan. Also wanted to mention that we're adding, at the beginning, early on, a plan-at-a-glance page, so there'll be a brief paragraph on each element right from the outset. We're adding a new acknowledgement section, where all your names will be listed, and also will include a tribal acknowledgement, updated population data, we're going to be removing or replacing some of the outdated data, some of the sections in the current plan are from 2006, so, we're just going to either move them out, replace them, or put them in the And we're adding the GMA required climate change and resiliency goals to the list of the GMA goals that are in the beginning of the, of chapter one. So, that covers the first chapter, and next time we see you, we'll probably have the full chapter or a few chapters done with the new formats, it gives you a chance to look at them. So, now, moving on to the land use element, before I do that, do you have any other questions on the changes to the first chapter? It's probably the easiest.
Madam Mayor, I do, on that, thank you very much for working on this, too, I know it's a lot of work. It's, it's a work of art, you've got probably many hours. The plan-at-a-glance, you're going to have basically a quick excerpt of what that plan is, is about, from what it looks like, land use element, housing element, and things like that. So, when they go to the housing element, will there be a summary of what the anticipated growth is, here's, just a quick, at a glance, here's your summary of what we're looking at for growth, units, jobs, where we were, where we're planning on being by, or look like we're expected to be at 2045?
Yeah, we'll probably, we're going to put that information in the land use element, and what we can do, we have it already summarized in there, but we can pull, do pull, callouts with boxes on the right-hand side, like I mentioned, there'll be graphics with that information in the land use element, we can, if you'd like, we can put that in the chapter one, two, in the introduction. That would be a good idea.
That would be my idea, for opening up with that.
Sure.
Give a quick example of what we're actually doing in there. And will it be the digital file, a linkable file that when you, when you go to land use, it brings you to land use?
Yes, that's our, yeah, we'll be doing that, so it makes it a little easier to find each chapter and get to it. Okay, this is your second reading of the land use element, we had a great discussion last time, thank you for your comments. Just wanted to, I sent a memo through Tom to you with some of the changes, but I'll highlight some of them over again. I want to really point out that I know there's been a lot of concern about density and changing the character of the community, we heard that. What we're proposing at this point, and Matt will go more into the housing requirements, is that with exception to the TMCO overlay, we're not proposing any changes to the future land, land use map. We think we could accommodate your housing requirements within the existing zoning. And we are also coming up with a new policy to develop a downtown activation plan to detail legislative, programmatic, and placemaking efforts to foster economic development, increase living wage jobs, and provide a more vibrant downtown hub for residents, workers, and visitors. We reinserted single-family into that one policy, we were ticked it out, so, thank you for that. And for the land use designation tables, last time I talked about maybe we're changing the terminology for, you know, from R5, R6, R7, and to high, medium, low, which is what a lot of other jurisdictions use, but there was one, there, our first meeting, the Planning Commission was okay with that, the second one, they raised some concerns, so we're going to work with Tom and his staff on potential, whether we're going to take that route or not, or just keep what's there now. So, we'll, stay tuned for that.
Which is it right now, I'm sorry? Is it high, medium, or low right now, or is it R5, 7, or 15?
R5, R7.
So, that's how it reads right now?
There's an R1, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I think it came up, is because a lot of people, the members of the public don't understand what R5 is, and, and actually, the implementation of R5, which is a minimum lot size of five units per acre, for example, is not necessarily what happens on the ground when you add ADUs or other provisions of the code that allow for higher different density, so, and that's why there was some discussion about changing it, but then it went into, well, then maybe it might be too flexible on the other side, so we're trying to find a balance.
If I may, real quick, is that consistent with the state standards for the GMA, as far as the high, medium, low? Are they, they're using the R5, R7, R6, R7?
You know, I, I've worked for a number of different jurisdictions, and they use different, the G, I don't think the GMA Growth Management Act really highlights, Nikki, if you're still here, maybe she can answer, but what you should use, as long as you provide different zones for different, for residential, and then zoning for...
I agree with, I agree with Donna.
Right, thanks, Nikki.
Thanks, Nikki.
Sure thing.
I've known Nikki for a while, so she's awesome.
We're well acquainted.
Yeah.
But who does that leave the interpretation and implementation up to?
So, the code has to be very specific as to what each zone, what the limitations are, what the minimum lot sizes are, what the standards are, and so, you have to, that's where that language is, in the code.
But, low, medium, and high would, that would be defined, so we know R5, what R5 means, we know what R7 means, but in, in this particular application, it's just going to say low, medium, and high, so, when we go to, when that goes to be implemented, then it just goes through our normal process, right?
Right, right, and so, and you would have a definition in your code of what low is, so let's say low would be one unit per acre, low density, a medium density would be four units or five units per acre, and then a high density would be seven or more, and so that, those bookends would be laid out in the code, but if you decided to go that way.
And are we talking about amending that code with the, with this comp plan at the same time?
Well, as part of, the requirements for the comprehensive plan update is that you will adopt new policy language or changes to existing policies that might require changes to your code. So, once you agree on the policy language, then the city's required, and they have six months to go in and update your development regulations, your code, to be consistent.
So, this is where we need to be very careful, is what you're saying?
Right, right, exactly, yeah.
If I may, on that, on the high, medium, low, especially with the high, if we're looping in our R7 and R15s in the same thing, I would be cautious of doing that, because now we're basically saying in anywhere that you have a multifamily, you can build an apartment. So, we'd probably want to, I'm sure the planning department's working on it, that's probably why they pulled it back, but for myself, if that came before the council and it wasn't defined, that, or if we were trying to combine the R7 or 15, I would have some questions about that.
All right.
Councilman Burns, I think has one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Actually, more just agreeing with Councilman Lavaca on that. I was hurrying up and looking up the map so I could see how many R series we had here, and if we can't say R5, 15 is extremely high density, I don't want to separate, or put these categories on that property.
And I, I think this is an example of why, I appreciate Tom wanting to bring this, these drafts to you early, just to get your feedback on, because I think the last thing you want is a whole year of public process with the Planning Commission, and then we come to you and you decide you don't like some of these things. So, now, hearing from you at this point, we can take this feedback back to the Planning Commission and, and discuss options based on what we heard tonight. Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, one more question.
I was actually just going to say that I, I agree as well. One of the biggest complaints I have received over the last several years in my ward is the amount of apartment complexes that have gone up in the density that it's bringing into town without the additional infrastructure to support it. So, as we are pulling through and bringing in more heads and providing more apartment spaces and multifamily homes and opportunities to come into town, we still are lacking in the development of additional living wages and jobs, right? And our roads are congested, and we've got, you know, it, sitting if, with this project that's going to be going on, it's going to increase traffic in the detours, and it's all for a better, greater cause down the road, but as it sits right now, just trying to cross Highway 20 at, you know, either 7:30 in the morning with school hours or after, after work about 5 o'clock, and then not to mention when Highway 20 is open to go up through the pass, it's a minimum sometimes of seven minutes to cross the street between Reed Street and, to go from Reed Street to North Reed Street, let alone the traffic diverted through town, and that includes the semis that try to avoid that traffic, and then they try to go down Ferry Street, Township, and then Ferry Street to get back in, onto Highway 20 to try to avoid that, that turn. So, that's the, the reality of some, some of the issues that the community is dealing with, and, you know, they've also expressed concerns about, you know, the schools and the additional heads that it brings in, which is fantastic, and it's wonderful that we have a school district that, there's kids that, families that want to move here to put them into the schools, but I don't believe that there's current plans to build additional schools, you know, so it's like, at some point, we do have to be conscious of, of making sure that our, our city remains healthy for the community members that are currently here, and they're not being taxed and taxed for additional development, for the purpose of development, when it's not, it's not sustainable, and it's not, it's not a healthy growth. And so, I would definitely be a... Um, and so I would definitely be against combining the R seven and the R fifteen in that, um, because it is one of the biggest pushbacks that I'm constantly addressing.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you, Donna.
Okay, thanks. I think that's, that's it. I just had, um, we are, like, and we mentioned last time, you're, the transitional mixed commercial zone overlay, we're proposing to actually turn that into a zoning district. Um, my understanding is that, um, from Nicole, that it isn't really being used right now, and, and what we're suggesting is turn it into a zone and allow some light um, manufacturing activities there that would cre- help create jobs, and then while at the same time allow for some housing options as well. And the, we also have added a new policy since we were here last, um, is to identify city-owned properties and funding sources to build no, new playfields for youth in the city. That it was expressed as a big priority for the planning commission. So that's all I have. Um, and we can have Matt jump into housing, or just, or do you have any more questions on the land use element?
I, I had one more question on the land use element, so. I, I know that, I believe it's part of the Climate Act, and it's probably up in the, um, the opening, I remember that one. Uh, was the reduced sprawl, the, the intent to reduce sprawling, so it does kinda densify, it does, you know, kind of um, prefer, at least the, the, the state standard, I believe that's where it's coming from, and where it came into here, to reduce the sprawling out and, and reduce the annexation even from the communities, but rather build up or build taller, or build more, uh, rezone from a seven to a fifteen, things like that. Um, it is in here. Is there, is there plans to, to look at that? And uh, Thomas, I'm sorry, I meant to get back to you about updates on this guy, 'cause you did send an email out, and so I figured, we've put in a lot of effort already through the council, and they'll probably bring back when they bring the draft back, but um, do you know what I mean by the reducing the sprawl?
Um, and so I think what you're meaning is, it's a Growth Management Act from nineteen ninety. One of the main goals of the act was, is to reduce sprawl. Um, and it was modeled after similar um, effort or act in Oregon, and then I think one other state. And the idea was, is to maintain, as we, we're seeing a lot of growth happening in Washington during that time, and quite a bit since then. Um, a decision was made, you know, by the state legislature to direct that growth into urban areas, and to avoid having a complete sprawl between Canada and Oregon all along the cor- you know, I five corridor. And then also, the goal was to protect rural lands and resource lands and agricultural lands, um, so that, I think, is that what you're, you're thinking of in terms of what you heard about reducing sprawl?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For us, it was farmland, yeah, the agriculture that you mentioned.
Yeah.
All right.
Great.
Thank you, Donna. And you know, I have to say, I think the last time you were here, it was a long, it was a long meeting as well, so you're quite a trooper. Thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, thank you.
Happy to be here.
Uh, Matt, Ben, is on?
Yes, um, thank you. Um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Uh, I didn't have to, I didn't have to make sure the microphone was turned on for me, so um, I, uh, we had that at the planning commission last week, but um, thank you for having me, um, mayor and council members. Um, so glad I could, glad I could be here with you virtually this evening. Thank you for your flexibility. Um, so, uh, what if you could go to the next slide? Um, so as I, as Donna mentioned, the, you know, housing was um, one of, kinda one of the main areas of change in what the state is requiring of communities that have, that have to do comp plans. And uh, we heard your feedback and planning commission feedback and community feedback about, you know, being really, being really hesitant to, uh, to do any kind of rezones or land use changes as part of this comp plan update, in part because of all the land use changes that you did in, in your last update. Um, and uh, so what we've really focused on in our first draft here of the housing element is, you know, you kinda have to square that circle between, okay, the state says we have to, as, as I believe you all have heard, um, throughout this process, you have to show that you have enough, like, theoretical capacity for um, housing units that are likely to be affordable to households across the economic spectrum. So all the way from super-low income households all the way up to people making well above the median, um, and you have to show that you have enough capacity, zone capacity, um, in your city limits to accommodate the, 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 the growth that you're expecting, or make, you know, some sort of changes in order to do that. There's a range of choi- of changes that you can choose to make, um, and some of, you know, sometimes it's map changes, sometimes it's, you know, looking at incentives and programs and development regulations, changes within your existing, um, within your existing uh, zoning and land use framework. And then there's funding things as well, which is a little bit squishier and tough to pin down over a twenty-year horizon for, for a small community that, that doesn't have a lot of um, funds or funding opportunities at its disposal. But what we've really focused on in the, the first draft here is um, you know, kinda bringing it up to speed with the changes to the GMA, and then um, uh, sort of reorganizing it around some of those changes, so that the sections and the, some of the write-up and the, the language that we're using and some of the analysis that we've done is reflective of those new requirements. But then when it comes to actually, you know, um, making changes, we've, and we've talked to the planning commission about this and, and council about this a little bit, um, in lieu of, uh, in lieu of major, you know, land use or zoning changes, um, looking at, at ways to create um, incentives within your existing zoning framework, um, to take advantage of some of the flexibility that you already have in things like your planned residential development code, um, a- and a, a couple of other key opportunities to try to incentivize um, construction and, and rental of units that are affordable to below eighty percent AMI, but not uh, making large-scale land use changes, um, and zoning changes in order to do that. Um, when you look at the draft elements in the, um, in your packet, you'll see a lot of red, uh, that's the, the, the markup that, that I did. Um, a lot of it is, has to do with the, kinda the write-up of the analysis of existing housing need in the community, which is based on the, the housing needs assessment that we did. Um, we've, I did it in stri- in underlined, strike-through, and in markup, uh, to kind of, just because of, of the workflow of doing the whole, the whole chapter, but because there's so many changes and like, you know, all the data has to be updated, and there's just so much red, what we, what we'll actually end up doing, uh, for the ordinance, just so you guys are, are, know, is we will have a, kind of a, um, an accept-all-changes version, and then like, strike through the, that full section of the existing element, and just replace it with um, the new data and um, results from the housing needs assessment. It's, it's gonna be cleaner, you know, right now, it's a lot of red, and I hope, uh, I hope none of you saw red when you saw all that red. Um, but uh, that whole section, that's like the second section, I think, on the, the housing inventory and, and assessment, that's based on data that we've already collected and analyzed, and that was um, previewed uh, last year, I think, late last year. So that's, that's just a lot of analysis and background and kind of conclusions from the housing needs assessment. Um, the other major things that we've, that I've tried to do in this first draft are, you know, um, eh, on this slide here, so like I said, we reorganized the sections, um, the housing element guidance has changed. You'll see on the first page of the draft element, first and second pages, that we kind of, y- you had the, the housing, the housing element requirements from the GMA in, uh, spelled out in your element, which I think is actually cool. I think it actually kinda grounds it in what you're being required to do, and everybody, then everybody can kinda see that. But obviously, that needed to be heavily updated, because the housing element requirements have changed drastically over the last, um, you know, uh, eight years, or however, about how long it's been since you've, that lasted your update, nine years. Um, and um, then the, the outline of the element itself changes, so we've kind of changed some titles and moved some stuff around to, to accommodate this, um, the new kind of analysis and framework of, you know, planning for and accommodating housing, housing units, um, affordable to the whole economic se- uh, spectrum of the community, and analyzing um, racially disparate impacts and displacement risk. Um, and then the, the section that everybody's always interested in, which is making adequate provisions, that means like, what are you gonna do if you have a shortfall of, of a, in a particular, um, in a particular um, uh, category of, of income bracket? Um, uh, the, a lot of the changes, some of the changes we made actually in this element also take into account other work that's, that's, that's already been done, or is being done as part of this, um, this year, kind of during the update cycle. So uh, the, the cottage housing ordinance reflected that in here, and then the state has also changed requirements around ADUs, and that code is accessory dwelling units, that code is going, is going to um, be changing as well, to, to conform with the new requirements of, of what the community can and can't do to regulate um, ADUs. And um, so we kind of reflected some of that in the, in the goals and policies. And then, uh, when it comes to the, 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 and I can kinda walk through some of these categories of changes, um, we had, we, we did some goal and policy edits, um, focused mainly on the couple of things that the planning commission, we worked with them, some of the, uh, the, the first pass at some of those policy and regulation ideas for what to do to accommodate the, the lower-income brackets without making major zoning changes. Um, and that was, we added a couple policies, um, related to uh, uh, considering offering a, like a density incentive, not a huge density incentive, but a density incentive in your um, planned residential development code, um, to where if a certain percentage of units are rented at below eighty percent area median income, which, you know, for Cedar Wully is, is a, is like eighty to, eighty thousand dollars for a family of four, so it's not exactly like, uh, it's not exactly a, um, a super-low threshold. Um, but uh, but, you know, so there's a, that the, uh, exploring the idea of a density incentive, um, so rather than requiring it or changing your zoning, um, i- in a big way, just creating an incentive program. Um, so the planning commission was i- in favor of looking into that, and so we added some language, um, related to that and the goals and policies. Um, and then we also added some po- a couple of policies related to the displacement risk analysis, you know, the, um, a lot of the data for a city of Cedar Wully's size are not terribly useful for some of that stuff, you know, the state gives you a lot of guidance, but it's all based, it's all like focused on urban communities, and it uses census tracts for a lot of the data, which Cedar Wully has like four census tracts, so it's really not all that helpful. Uh, but one of the things that we did see is that really a lot of the potential, you know, pe- people in kind of naturally occurring affordable units in Cedar Wully who might be at risk of displacement are um, people who live in manufactured home parks. So we added a couple policies related to exploring some sort of, um, some sort of overlay or some sort of protection in the code that would help protect, um, help, help mitigate the displacement risk for manufactured home parks, um, either currently in the city or that may someday be annexed into the city. Um, and so that was related to that displacement risk analysis. Uh, but also, uh, and this was really interesting, that this last, um, this last piece here on this bullet, uh, the, your housing element had something really cool that not a lot of, um, that not a lot of communities have, which you actually had this list of actions at the end of your existing element, and they're more specific. So the idea is like you go from general to specific in these plans, and so the general is like, you know, that vision statement that Donna talked about, every chapter has its own kind of vision statement that's gonna be parceled out from that, that big vision statement that's currently in the plan, so that's like really high level. And then the goals are basically like, you know, um, aspirations, like we wanna be a community that, that does X or does Y. Um, and then policies are sort of more specific directions that say, you know, the city should uh, explore partnerships with, you know, with uh, nonprofit builders to construct um, affordable homes for, for sale, you know, or something like that, with, you know, partner with Habitat for Humanity, that sort of thing. Um, and then the actions are even more specific. They are things that you can use to build a, a council or planning commission work program around, where you say, we're going to, you know, uh, we're going to do this, explore this specific code change and tr- do these specific things. It's a really cool idea, and they were already in your, your plan, which is really cool. So um, we, we kinda went through your goals and policies and found some policies that are actually more like actions, so we moved them down into the actions, um, portion of the, of the plan. And then there were other policies that were kind of redundant, and we were able to delete some policies, and then some of the actions were kind of duplicative as well. So we said, okay, how can we kind of consolidate these, removing some things around, these look more like policies, these look more like actions, how do we kind of splice that? Um, but I think it had some really good bones, and so despite all the red that you see in the, the housing needs assessment portion of the, the earlier part of the, the draft element, the goals and policies, uh, there was a lot, there's a lot of good stuff in there, and the changes we made, I, I think, you know, like, again, this is first draft, but we wanted to be respectful of what we'd heard from you all and from the planning commission and from the public, um, on the, the, the zoning side of things, and try to thread that needle, and try to keep the, 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 the good architecture of your goals, policies, and actions that you currently have, and um, just kind of clean things up and bring it up to, uh, to comply with the, um, with the, uh, the, the new, the new reality of housing planning under the GMA. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions specifically about any of my, you know, proposed changes or anything I've said here this evening, um, and we'd love some kind of guidance on some of those things, you know, we, we added some things in by the planning commission recommendation, and those are in the comments in the draft, and like I said, we added some language in about exploring some density incentive programs, um, because you have a lot of capacity in your residential zones, um, but, and a surplus of kind of moderate income, like eighty to one-twenty percent area median income, you know, um, the, the middle housing and attached townhouses and things like that, because of your PRD program. Um, so how can we kind of incentivize some of those units that we're not proposing apartment buildings get built in the R five zone, but since you can already do a PRD, is there a way of using that to get some of those units that might otherwise get built to be affordable? Um, so that was kind of the, the idea of the planning commission, and I'm looking forward to getting your, um, getting your comments, so that we can take this back and continue the good work.
All right, thank you, Matt. We do have a question here by Councilwoman Kestie.
Hi, thank you. I was just curious, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we do not have to implement those policies because our, we fall under twenty-five thousand people, then why are we putting it in this?
That's a great question. So uh, you, you're talking about the middle housing, um, uh, regulations. You're right that that, that, that specific set of changes that you'd have to make do not apply if you're under twenty-five thousand. I'm not talking about middle housing as in complying with House Bill eleven, eleven-ten, I'm talking about the types, the literal types of housing that are considered middle housing, so duplexes, townhomes, cottages, um, uh, um, stacked flats, uh, you don't have any stacked flats in Cedar Wully, but like, there's, there's, there's several that are defined by the state. The communities that have to do the middle housing stuff are, you're right, are twenty-five thousand and above, um, i- in, in most cases. Cedar Wully doesn't have to do that, but you actually already have a lot of middle housing capacity, because you have this PRD program, and you have a lot of um, land in your R five and R seven zones that could be developed using that code. So it's not that, that you have to do it, it's that you've already kind of done part of it. Um, so you're actually built, you're, you're in a great, a great spot there.
But my, I guess my question is-
You don't have to do it, it's already in good shape.
I, my question is, why have it in there at all?
Is it to bring definition? Is it to bring definition so that when it does occur, we have definition as to what we're looking at, or what we can do?
Well, so, that's a really good question. I mean, so the reason it's in there right now is because the, um, the, the city, I mean, it's over many years, I've, I've come to learn about the process of developing your planned residential development code, uh, over many years of kind of hashing that out, um, the goal was to introduce some flexibility and good design into your residential zones. And so you already, you've had what you might consider middle housing, um, some middle housing regulations on the books for over a decade now, I believe, if, if memory serves me correctly, of when the, the PRD code was, was adopted, and you've had projects built under that code. Um, so it's not so much a, uh, like, we're, we're not proposing anything that would, that, that would, uh, that would say like, oh, you should do this change that's required by House Bill eleven-ten now, so you don't have to do it later. That's, that's not what's on the, what's on the, um, the, 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 the docket here. Um, the only thing that, uh, the only thing I believe that I put in the draft element related to, um, related to that law was, there's, there's some stuff in there about, um, about design review, and I just put some draft changes in there to encourage it to be administrative design review, rather than establishing a design review board, because um, it's good, just good planning practice, um, even though it does make more work for Tom and his team. Um, and also because someday, if you do hit that twenty-five thousand person threshold, you can't do design review boards for middle housing anymore. Um, and so it's just like a, hey, you know, uh, let's just add this language to encourage administrative design review process, and then if- Um, and so it's just like a, hey, you know, uh, let's just add this language to encourage administrative design review process. And then if you do some, someday get there. You know, then you don't have to change anything, but we're not, we're not talking about any of those, you know, four units on a lot. Kind of stuff that the cities over twenty-five thousand have to do. That's not part of the, not part of the program for you guys, which I think you'll probably be grateful to hear.
Good, thank you.
So Matt, um, can I, um, jump in real quick too? I think maybe one of the things that she was. Um, maybe trying to touch on is that we still have to plan for income bands and, um, middle housing. Helps us to meet some of the targets that were required to meet for those various income bands.
Yes.
When you're asking about why, why you have to have it or, or why it would be there.
Yeah, yeah. So the, um, the way that the, the way that the, the GMA updates to the, the income bands planning i- i- is, has. Come to take shape through the, the administrative code that was developed and then the guidance from the state agency that, that assists communities with this. Uh, is that, um, different, different types of units, and this is going to vary community by community, right? So different types of units are, are likely to be affordable to people at different, to households at different income bands. And. Um, generally when you're talking about your existing capacity, you, you have to assume that anything that is, that is going to be built as detached. Single family is going to be affordable for people making above a hundred twenty percent of the area median. Um, and if you look at the housing prices in Cedar Woolley, I think that starts to make a lot of sense as to, as to what that looks like. Uh, but then below that, it kind of just depends community by community. Um, and so when we did the housing needs assessment, we looked at kind of the, the rental price data and house price data. For different types of units of different sizes, as much data are available on those things. And, um, and broke out different types of units that are allowed in your different zones by different income bands. And so when, when we talk about, um, you know, middle housing, middle housing is a, a, a group of housing types. That are somewhere between a detached, single family house and an apartment building. And, um, generally speaking, those are likely to be affordable to households making between eighty and one twenty percent of the area median. Um, so we call that, you know, there's a lot of terms that get thrown around, moderate, medium, middle, right? It's, it gets a little murky, but we would consider those like moderate to median income households. Um, uh, a lot of middle housing products are likely to be affordable to them. I'll note that also includes ADUs would probably fall into that category as well. Um, so that, there's a whole group of income brackets. You have to, you know, show you have enough capacity for the different income brackets and middle housing types like duplexes, townhomes, cottages. Are, uh, a way of meeting that demand. Does that, um, Mayor, I think that is in line with what you were, what you were saying.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, Councilman Henderson?
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Matt. Um, so on the adoption of the new cottage ordinance is. How does that differentiate with what you just spent the last five minutes explaining?
Yeah, so that is a, that is an example of a, a code change that you can point to to show that you have. You have expanded the, um, the supply of housing that's afford, that's going to be affordable likely to people making under the median. Um, so there's a couple of spots in the draft chapter where, where I, uh, we kind of talk about. Um, like putting that, like referring to the cottages, uh, referring to cottage housing in some of the policies specifically. Um, to acknowledge that that's been done already. Um, and, uh, and then when we talk about, when we show our work. In the appendices of the comp plan where we say like, hey, here's the land capacity analysis. Here's like the housing allocations. Here's how we kind of are. Trying to, you know, take these, these, um, uh, the, the changes, the things, whatever ends up getting adopted, things like. If, if, if a, if a density incentive gets put into code or obviously with the eight, the code changes for ADUs that you have to do and then the cottage stuff that you just went through. Um, those are all things that you can show, you can kind of show your work and say like, hey, we're making a wider range of options affordable to a wider range of income bands. So it is related and what this is, uh, that's part of showing the work is showing that you've actually already done some things this year. Um, and obviously in the, in the past several years as well between plan updates, you've actually done some things that, that will help, um, kind of close that gap.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Diamond?
So. The adoption of the cottage ordinance, I believe that's still at the, the, uh, planning commission. Is that correct? Yeah. So if this is not actually necessary for cities that are over twenty-five, for under twenty-five thousand people. And this is on the list, is that going to force council then to adopt something that is not necessarily necessary when state law is going to require ADUs? Um, to be basically open with up to two per lot, um, thus increasing the middle housing unit. In regards to the actual numbers needing to be provided to the state and would that just suffice it? Or are you, or is this trying to pigeonhole council into adopting something that may or may not necessarily be necessary for its future planning?
That's an interesting question. Um, I'll probably, I'll probably toss this to, to Tom, but just with the, with the, the statement that. There are a number of good reasons to, to consider, um, regulations to, to, um, to sort of create an avenue for cottage housing. That don't really have anything to do with, um, with whether or not they're kind of double dipping on capacity with ADUs or something. Uh, there's, there's kind of, you know, good market reasons to do it as well. Um, and if the market's there, it's, you know, it's creating another, another, um. Another possible housing type that can be, um, developed within the community context, um, regardless of whether or not it's, it's needed. I think the, the thing to keep in mind about your, your housing targets and, and I think we, we mentioned this last year when we had the, kind of the, the housing forum, but. Um, you'll end up, Cedar Woolley is going to end up, as is almost every community in the state. Kind of having to plan for more housing units than you actually need to accommodate your population, um, because of the, the income bracket thing. And the goal of, of, you know, some of the, the limited policy changes that, that we've proposed as far as, you know, like. Exploring incentives for, um, for, uh, you know, affordable housing and affordable units and PRDs. Is kind of trying to take some of your, you have a lot of capacity for middle housing because of your PRD code. Uh, you know, if we can take some of that and say like, oh, some of this is going to end up being affordable, that helps you toward that. Gap of, you know, pretty sizable gap of seven hundred something, um, units in the, the low income category. So on, under eighty percent. So Tom, I'll, I'll let you speak to the kind of the specific reasons for the cottage housing, um, or Nicole, if you're still there. Um, but, uh, you know, just to, just to say that there are plenty of good reasons to do it, even if it's not being forced on you by, uh, by the state.
Yeah, Matt, I think you covered that, um, well. The, we're, we're, you know, the, the cottage housing ordinance is, is simply allowing us to. Offer, um, an additional type of housing. Um, and the purpose of that is, is. Uh, to, to get at the affordability issue that we see happening here. So it's not, it's not, um. Something that will be popping up everywhere, but it's something, something that is, uh, simply going to be available if, if this passes. Something available to, uh, residents here in our community as an option for, um, getting housing that they wouldn't otherwise be able to afford. It's as simple as that. The intention isn't to pigeonhole council or force something the community doesn't want. It's just providing another flavor of housing, if you will.
I guess, I guess in that my question is, does it need to then still be in this comp plan if it's, if we're satisfied in other ways? And then that if the cottage were, housing were to be passed organically because it's the right thing to do for our, our city and the, and the, and the people living in it. Then that would, you know, wouldn't cause any issue. I just want to make sure that by putting it in the comp plan when it's not actually necessary or required by state law. That we wouldn't then be pigeonholed into half, having to adopt that or make those changes in the future. Because if it truly is good for the city and it truly is good for the people within that, I, I think that we, we have a wise council that would make those decisions. I don't like the idea of being forced into or pigeonholed into adopting certain types of housing and situations. Simply because Olympia says we have to do it. Um, I, I don't like that at all. Um, because we are not there and we have people moving out of those areas and into Skagit County and into the city of Cedar Woolley. Because we are not those areas and I don't want us to become that. Um.
We could take a look at the, the language there to see if we could broaden it a bit.
Yeah, I just, I just, if we're satisfying the middle housing, um, in other ways. And it doesn't have to be put in here where we would, I just want to make sure that we are not pigeonholed into having, being forced to accept something down the line. That maybe isn't quite right for the city. Um, or maybe it will be. Maybe it would be a great change, right? We don't know because as a council, we have not seen it.
Right. Yeah. Thank you for explaining that. I, I think that's helpful to hear that. Um, we can take a look and go back to our lab, as we like to say, and see if we can come up with some language. It, uh, uh, offers a little more flexibility there.
And then I, I had one more question. Um, Matt, you had mentioned that there was some offsets of pricing for affordable housing and. I, you know, I'm all for trying to keep things affordable in, in this city. It's, it's hard enough as it is with the prices of everything. Um, however, one of the things that does concern me is that, um, I really want to make sure that we are not putting in there the use of the. Multi-family tax exemption. Um, I had. A bunch of people that went back and looked at, um, a city council meeting where we actually had a, uh, presentation by the, by commerce. In regards to that and had talked about, um, the fact that these developers would come in and in order to make affordable housing, you then partner with the city. And in partnering with the city, the city then agrees to for X amount of years, um, offset hookup prices and, you know, all, all these different things, right? Into play. Um, but we all know that all of that stuff is not free, right? And so the actual term that was used is that it would be a tax share. Well, a tax share means that the community taxes go up. Because it has to be allocated from somewhere. And in my opinion, development needs to be paid for by development. And we can't push that additional housing onto current taxpayers, current community members that have lived here for. Ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years, uh, that are on fixed incomes and struggling as it is. And so I, I just, I, I really would like to see us. Shy away from, um, having, having to include that if in fact that's what you were referencing.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. Um, uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Yeah, so there's nothing in the draft element right now, um, that has to do with MFTE at all. Um, I know that was, it was a potential tool that was under discussion, but we've, we've held off consciously on putting it in there because. I think, uh, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're still waiting to hear back from, there was some fact finding that we were waiting for, um, from the county assessor. Um, to kind of get an estimate on what that tax shift would actually look like. Um, so in the meantime, we have not added anything in there about it. The, what I was referring to was something we, uh, discussed with the planning commission a couple of times now, which was. Um, for specifically in your, i- in, in PRDs, um, currently there is a so-called density bonus or a so-called density bonus. Um, uh, that's related to having a clubhouse, but you're, it's actually, it's kind of confusing because it's still technically capped at the maximum density in the zone. Which for R five is five dwelling units an acre and R seven is seven dwelling units an acre. Um, and so just because of the way that the, the, the code is written, um, the suggestion from, that, that planning commission wanted to explore was basically allowing. So if you're in R five, you, if you, if you, that we don't, we haven't settled on a number yet because this is all, it's all very early and we're just kind of exploring concepts. Um, and what it might look like and what the language, you know, some supportive but not terribly specific language in the comp plan, uh, could, could cover. Is something like, you know, if you're in R five and you do a PRD and twenty percent of the units are, are going to be rented for a period of up to twenty years at eighty percent or below AMI. You get, you can go up to seven dwelling units an acre for that specific project. Um, and that would be, and so that, that's an idea that they wanted to kind of explore. So it's not a, it's not a, a subsidy. It's not a, like a, a tax shift. It's just a, um, hey, you can get, you, you can go up to six or seven or whatever the number. That council and planning commission settles on. Um, you get a little bit of a, 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 a density bonus, um, in the, in your, in your PRD development. If a certain percentage of units are affordable. That was the idea they wished to explore. Not a, not a tax shift or a, an MFTE program. So that's not in the plan.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Cock?
Uh, yes, hi. Thanks, Matt, for this excellent presentation. I was curious about the ideas on displacement. Um, because I know there's some creative ideas that have been done in this area. For example, I believe it's Watcomb County. In mobile home parks, if they decide the owner, oh, we're going to sell it and kick all y'all out. That, uh, uh, the tenants or the people who live in the mobile home park can actually band together and buy it. Uh, the idea is to prevent, uh, you know, affordable housing from disappearing, which I think we're seeing across our entire country.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great, um, a great example. Um, I, I've heard of that as well and, um. If, if we can find some way of, of kind of, um, you know, the, the city, uh, doing something from a, like a policy or plan perspective to, to, you know. Whether it's, um, you know, if, if the, if the owners like band together and buy it, if there's like some sort of ground lease kind of situation where like the, the city would offer like a, if there's. Yeah, you know, that would require obviously an outlay of city funds, but there's some like creative ideas that you can come up with on that. Um, you know, we don't want to, don't want to commit the, the city to, um, to, you know, financial support for mobile home parks, uh, you know, willy-nilly. Um, but there's some creative ways and I think that's a good example, you know, so the, the, the zoning, kind of an overlay or something is one idea. Um, and that could easily be paired with other things, like if there's some sort of code or policy support or, you know, um, a ground lease or something that the city could offer. A, um, a, a mobile, a manufactured home park association that, that buys their property. Yeah, we can look at maybe some additional language on that if you think that's worth, uh, considering. I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, and thank you very much for, for doing this presentation. It is very helpful to, to hear all the different perspectives and get that moving forward. I just had some, uh, questions, uh, along with Councilman D- Diamond, definitely the incentive when it was brought forth, it was, uh, it was a big challenge. So I'm glad you touched on that and that's not necessarily in there. Um, but we don't really want to be using taxpayer funds to pay for affordable housing. That kind of brings me into the affordable housing concept. Um, in our two thousand sixteen comp plan, we were expecting like twenty-four thousand growth. And we've talked about that where now this plan is calling for sixteen thousand and nine hundred, um, so much less. And yet we plan to have all these houses or availability for housing for up to twenty-four thousand. So we are like seven thousand people less. Um, but it's that bandwidth that was introduced in this last session that we're, we're held to on this one. So. As far as housing that's affordable, I just want to know how much of that do we actually need? And right now it's, it's basically saying like you put in here, the medium home price, yeah, for, for Cedar Woolley is five hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, right? Um, I think there, it's, there's a larger aspect to this because we're fighting to get the affordable housing. Our upper levels are good. Our API is for, for a hundred or above. Um, eighty to a hundred pretty much seemed to be okay. It was really that affordable housing that was biting us with the, the requirements that were coming down. But it's not necessarily subsidizing that with taxpayer money for the developers and the builders, like what Councilwoman Diamond was saying. It's, our property taxes keep going up because the value of the housing keeps going up, um, even though it seems in a way artificial. And I know that that's through the assessment and things like that, but, you know, if we keep seeing the property value or the housing increase. And be way more than the average cost of people's wages going up, then we're always going to be subsidizing them and we're just going to find less people putting into the pool. Is there, is there anything we can do about that on this plan because we're planning to basically subsidize?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a very good question and really good perspective. Thank you. Yeah, so the, the, um. The kind of original directive from the state to, to kind of plan by income bracket. The allocations that the cities and Skagit County, uh, the process that, that you all went through with the, um, the council of governments to set the. Kind of determine the allocations for each community, that was done through that, um, intergovernmental process. And that was like very specific income bands, right? Because the state said, you know, you got to look at it from zero to thirty, thirty to fifty, fifty to eighty, eighty to a hundred, a hundred to one twenty. And then one twenty and above. Um, and it's very specific. And then there's the, like the permanent supportive housing versus non-permanent supportive housing for the extremely low income. And then there's the emergency housing beds, capacity and all this other stuff. The, when you actually look at your like current capacity versus, um, versus your, your need. Um, I won't go too far under the hood with the, the housing needs assessment and the land capacity analysis stuff, but the, um. Once you take into account stuff that's currently like in the pipeline or stuff that was built, um, it's, this is kind of. it's, this has kind of been built in the last couple of years through the, your development process. That kind of whittles down some of that target. That also takes some of the land that was, that had capacity kind of off the roster. So it's like there's no free lunch. When you talk about like true affordability, the nice thing, you know, there's a lot of challenging things about the new planning environment for housing. But the nice thing is that you don't, you don't have to actually show that, like, that, you don't have to like register it with the state that specific units at specific price points got built. Because like they, the legislature knows and like, I mean, pretty much everybody knows that cities don't, you know, unless it's like, unless you're Seattle in some cases, cities don't build housing. And cities especially don't build housing for, for like, like apartments. And, and so when you're talking about like very low income housing, especially like you're talking like anything below 50% area median income, it's very difficult to do that without, without subsidy, you know, financial subsidy of some sort. And that's just, it's a tremendously challenging environment to try to get any of that stuff built right now. You know, the, all, all the, there's, whether tax credits are going to be there is kind of in flux and there's obviously costs are going up for labor and materials. And so it's just very challenging to build housing at that level. I, so there's, there's only, there's only limited kind of levers that the city can pull to actually ensure that stuff gets built. The nice thing is that when you're looking at your analysis of capacity versus allocations, you get to group everything together for 80% and below. So basically that means, generally speaking, apartments or other housing units that have some sort of, you know, incentive, whether it's a density incentive or, or some sort of other tool, like, you know, there's other things that you can do, like reduce or waive, like, facility connection charges for like your public works fees for affordable units or something. So again, no free lunch because then that's less, less money getting paid, you know, to, to, to extend the sewer and, and all that. But, but there are other kind of levers that you can pull from that perspective. But, you know, you're right that when it comes to like actually constructing stuff that's affordable for very low income households, you don't, the, the city can't ensure that that gets built. There's nothing that you can really do other than, you know, cash payments and, and financial subsidies to make that more feasible. And for a city of Seadraw Wully's size, that's just not, that's not in the offing most of the time. And, and as you, as you and your colleague mentioned, the MFTE, the idea of the MFTE program didn't sit well with all of you because of the idea of the tax shift. And, you know, that's a totally valid perspective. So long story short, it's very difficult. You don't have to show that it gets built at particular price points. And you get to group everything under 80% together for this analysis. So basically, as long as you can show that you've got the apartment capacity or, and this is important, that you've got some sort of mechanism or, you know, incentive or tool that you're using to try to get some units that might not otherwise be affordable at that price point to be affordable at that price point, then you're, then you're good. So if you can, like, like I said, if you can, you can say 80% or below, if you can say, have a, have a thing that says, you get two extra units in your PRD if you offer 20% of your units at 80% AMI or below. That does a huge service for you for complying with your GMA stuff. So doesn't have to be financial, it can be other things.
So thank you, yeah, thank you for that explanation. So if we're only needing to grow about 3,300 people from where we are right now, right? So it's about 14% growth. And we had enough housing to accommodate up to growth for 24,000. So that's almost 10,000 people more. In that 80, because you're saying we can loop the 80 to 0, 0 to 80% together. I guess my question is, how many actual houses do, is the state asking us to have available? Now, I fully understand that we are not going to be building them. We just have to have, like you said, that mechanism to pull to say, oh, if this person wanted to build an R15 here or an R5 here, or put an ADU there, they have the ability to do that. And this, the, the city has the land and the utilities and the infrastructure to accommodate growth for that level. So how many, how many of those houses are we down? Is it, I think it was like 42 or 48?
So you're, and again, this, this is, it gets kind of weird because, again, like because of the income bracket thing, you actually end up having to plan for more housing units than you would otherwise need. You know, because you're not going to, in most cases, communities aren't taking like a ton of single-family capacity and turning it into multifamily capacity. It's a little more nuanced than that. So the, the total population growth, you know, is like just shy of, shy of 4,000, like you said. But the, the housing unit, after you kind of take out the pipeline units that have been, that have been built in the last couple of years, if you add up the housing need across those income brackets, it's a little over 1,900 housing units. And you have capacity for more than that because of the work that you guys did in your last plan to do the, the PRD and the UVMU and all that other stuff. You actually have, you actually have more capacity for more units than the need. It's just the type that's the, kind of the rub, right? So you have a small surplus in single-family capacity, couple hundred units. You've got a, a pretty sizable capacity, a, a surplus in 80 to 120%. So that kind of median income range, a little bit below, a little bit above. That's because of like your PRD and, and the, the other zoning changes, your, your R15. And then your deficit for 0 to 80 is, is about 790 units. So, you know, pretty sizable, but it's, that's because of the, it used to be that you planned for population. If you have enough housing units to accommodate your population, you're good. And you actually have enough housing units, more than enough housing units to, to accommodate your population. It's just that the type of units and the income brackets that those can be considered under is, is, is where it gets wonky.
So the concept is, is that if we were to fill up these, these plots for housing, that housing is going to go for the median house price of 525,000 and that's not going to bring you into that lower income. That's like a $3,000 mortgage. So even though there's enough room, so the ADUs that we have available that are one on every other property, I believe now is the, the code. Shouldn't that suffice for a lot of that? I think all we're really battling with the comp plan as far as housing was that 0 to 30 range? Or was it the 0 to 60? I know that we can loop in that 80, but 719 homes, we seem to have enough capacity to accommodate that. It was, there was a range that we were not making. And that's where we were struggling to say, oh, you got to rezone this or look at that.
Yeah, the ADUs are definitely a part of that. ADUs are generally, I, I'd have to look back at the, at what we, what we looked at for the numbers for Seadraw Wully. But generally speaking, ADUs are, are considered to be, like, some, some will serve that 50 to 80 bracket. But generally for an ADU, it's depending, obviously it depends on, on who's, who's building it and, and, and how it gets built and why. But they generally are going to be between 50 and 100% AMI. So they, they do, they do do a little bit of hell, uh, work to help you with that low income bracket. There is also, like, it's kind of tough because the, when, when the state says like, hey, show your work on housing, you have to, you have to look at your, your past trends in housing, in unit production for ADUs and then like kind of project that forward. But that doesn't really make any sense because then the state changed the rules on ADUs last year. And so that's still a little bit of an open question about how, like, how many ADUs you could anticipate. You can't, you can't just say, oh, you know, well, now that we can have two on every, on every property, you know, we're just going to have two, two ADUs on every property, there, problem solved. I, I wish it was that easy, but that's, I don't think that's going to let you off the hook. There is, but somewhere between the current, I, I forget what the number was, but when you went back and looked at your ADU permits, you've gotten some ADU permits over the last few years. Like certainly it's, it's not, it's not nothing, but like if you project it out 20 years, it's also not like remotely in the league of, of closing that gap. But it does help, right? So if you can kind of say like, oh, we think that because of the code changes, it's actually going to, you know, there's actually going to be more interest, higher interest. You can, it will chip away at that. And when we, when we have the, the final appendix, we'll kind of show whatever we end up settling on that with the methodology. But I, I, it's a good point. I mean, I think that the, there's a little bit of a black hole in the, in the guidance from the state and the best practices on this because for small communities that just don't have a lot of permits of any one particular type, you know, you can't just look at, oh, we've had eight ADU permits in the last three years. So we project that out 20 years. It's like, well, okay, that doesn't really get you there, right? So there's some, got to do some kind of other math and we haven't totally settled on that.
So one, the last thing I have is just a caution to Councilon. The planning as well, Tom, is on this low income building. And I understand a need for low income because there is low income. But what it also does, it could incentivize. So low income could be getting state subsidies and federal subsidies anyways. They could be getting EMT or EBT cards. And, and we've seen that abuse, people buying a bunch of groceries and then going to the lottery machine or the liquor store, right? Massive abuse with that, massive abuse with state subsidies. So then we, we see, okay, well, that's an income bracket that people are settling into and it's growing. So now we have to subsidize their housing as well as the city. And so that is not always the best bet. We do want to help out the lower income, but we don't want to incentivize low income. And that's a little bit what's going on with this, if, if I'm kind of seeing it correctly. One last thing, and this is just on that land use, and I'm sorry, Donna, I meant to ask about it. It was the LUI or LU 1.4 where we have pursue industrial park development within the industrial designated area. We added in prioritize industrial development that utilizes electrification and other methods of decarbonization. So I, I would love, and I know that's part of our climate plan and that's a note that's in there. It helps with, with that part. But it is something where I don't want to limit manufacturing, limit industrial uses of these places just to these specific uses because we're, we're, we're not able to, you know, accommodate that, that climate plan. So that would be one section where I would like to see it maybe a little bit more broad, opened up. You know, if people want to do that, we can ask them, yeah, but we don't want to limit our, our industries, you know. Thank you.
And Councilman Henderson?
Yep, thanks, thanks Nick for pointing that out. That, that was something that I kind of looked sideways at a little bit too with the land use thing. So Matt, this isn't directed specifically at you, but this is probably one of the most dry conversations I've ever had in my entire life. And so I'm, I'm really trying to, I'm really trying to get down to the meat and bones of it here. And it, it sounds to me like we're getting, we're getting two options. Either we, either we create an artificial oversupply so the demand goes down and the price goes down is option one. And then the other option that I'm hearing is subsidize. Is that, is that accurate of kind of what I'm hearing throughout the last 40 minutes?
I mean, I think those are, I think those are kind of two sides of the same coin. I think the way I would look at it is there's, you know, the, the, like, I mean, maybe this is just me with my planner hat on, but you know, the, the legislature says you have to look at it, you have to do it by income band. There's kind of a couple of different ways, like, you know, tools that you can use to get there. One of them is financial. You know, you can do things like an MFTE program or, you know, cut permit fees for affordable units or things like that. The other side is more like the land use side. There's zoning changes, you know, land use map changes, and then there's development regulations changes. So things like trying to tweak your existing code to support, you know, sort of bending the curve in the direction of affordability. I, you know, but to kind of get to your, I think, what I think you're, what I think I hear you saying is, is that, is that, talking about like the, you know, oversupply and drive prices down, that's, that's, that is one way that you could look at it. I think one thing to keep in mind is that, is that if you're not, like, you're not looking at, like, we're not proposing looking at like, you know, like I said, like some communities might do, like say, oh, we've got a bunch of single-family capacity, let's turn all that into multifamily capacity. That's like really kind of monkeying with the, the local market and kind of made it, maybe leading to some perverse outcomes. I think the way to look at the situ, the situation that Seadraw Wully is in is, is that you, like many other communities, have an affordability issue with housing. And part of that is because of, it's not solely due to this, but part of it is a scarcity of options at lower price points. And so the idea from the legislature's point of view and from planning practice point of view is that the more units that get built at a particular price point, the more affordable those units, like, all, all units will become more affordable no matter what those get built at. So there is kind of a, it is kind of in that flavor. You know, I think there's, you can kind of do both things, right? You can look at, like incentives to, whether it's financial or otherwise, to create stuff at a particular affordability level or a particular unit type. Or you can do map changes or you can do both. But like the, kind of the overall goal here is there's an affordability crisis hitting every part of the state and what can local communities do to try to bend that curve in a more healthy direction for the whole city? So you can look at it that way. I, I think it's a really interesting question. And I apologize that it's been very dry. I, I, I get that a lot. That's, that's part of the, that's part of the housing game.
Well, actually, I, I was just going to say, in regards to it, sometimes I think it's hard for some of the community to clearly understand the whole median income situation. Because when you're talking about, well, we just need to add more R15s and more apartment complexes and, you know, and that's going to solve our problem. But the hard reality is, is it, it's not. Because if you look at, like, in my ward specifically, most people's mortgage payments are less than what they would have to pay if they went and rented. And so we're creating and adding to a housing bracket because the state is saying we need to, but the, it, it's still more expensive than the people that are currently living in the community and in the wards. And they're owning their homes and not renting from, you know, an apartment complex and, and stuck in, in, sometimes there's, some people love to live in apartment complexes and have no maintenance and all the stuff. And some people are there, you know, short-term and try to use it as a stepping stone to, to purchase a home in their future and, and have that. And we don't want to discourage anybody from any of those opportunities, right? But the hard reality is right now, development costs are, are higher and that all trickles down back to the, the renters. And renting costs right now are more than a lot of people's mortgage payments. And so it, I guess it's just, we keep going in this like big circle of what this all actually means. And it's, it's, and when, when our estimated population continues, is looking to go down and we're saying we're supposed to have to put this stuff into an income bracket. And in doing that, we need to create more apartments or have the proper zoning for that. But the reality is, is the prices of that are actually more expensive than some of the actual homes. It, it's really hard to, to stomach from my perspective.
Yeah, it, it is hard. It's, it's a hard problem. And, and what you're getting at, I think, is, is like a lot of the new apartments that get built are not, are, are what a lot of people would consider, you know, the rent would be, not be considered affordable. So, yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. I, I think that's in part why, you know, feedback from you all and from Planning Commission and from the existing community has been helpful because, like, you know, you have, like, you kind of have this capacity already within your R5 and R7 and to some degree, R15 zones to, to do stuff like, you know, like the cottage thing is a good example. Or like, like a unit lot subdivided townhome where it's, you know, it's certainly not going to be something that somebody making 50% AMI is going to be buying unless it's built by like Habitat or a nonprofit builder or something that specializes in that, right? So there, there is that angle to it. But, you know, it's, it's, can the, can somebody who's making a, a median wage in Seadraw Wully currently afford a new mortgage on a, on a home, a median home in Seadraw Wully? No, that's the, that's the, kind of the, the crux of the problem. But maybe they can afford, maybe they can afford a mortgage on like a, a ground lease cottage and a cottage development that might be $200,000 cheaper than the house or a townhouse. And so that's part of that, is that it's not just about apartments. And so that, like, the, the idea behind that, that we, the Planning Commission wanted us to explore with the density incentive and the PRD is that you're not actually saying that it's going to be apartments. You're saying, hey, you can already build these unit types in your PRD if you can, if you can write a covenant into the, into the sale of these townhome lots that they're going to be, you know, the, like, the first two buyers are going to buy, have to, you know, they'll have to buy them at, 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 you know, a price that's affordable to, to 80%. they'll have to buy them at, at, you know, a price that's affordable to 80% area median income. Then you've got this unit type that might already get built. And it's not an apartment, it's not, it's kind of like a new market rate thing. There's actually like an affordability component to it. So, long way of saying, it's a difficult problem. And like, you're right that apartments are expensive. And also, new homes, well, just new mortgages for homes at the median price in Cedar Woolley are also very expensive. You know, that, like, I think somebody said, I think I actually did a mortgage calculation in the Housing Needs Assessment. And I think it was like, yeah, it was like $3,400 a month or something for a $523,000 house with 10% down or something. So, you know, it's, it's a lot. And that is, that's out of reach of the majority of households in Cedar Woolley. So, it's a real problem.
All right. Well, we want to extend our thanks to you, Matt and Donna, for coming and sharing this information, listening to us, answering questions, taking this information back and working with it. Along with that, I want to thank Tom and Nicole and Ashton, the whole team. As a matter of fact, you're doing great work. It's hard work, challenging work, but you're moving forward with it and we appreciate it. We want you to especially send our thanks and gratitude to the Planning Commission because I know that they've done a lot of work on this. They are working very hard and even willing to do extra meetings just to help us make the goal. So, we extend our thanks. And there was a lot of good information and good discussion that came out of this. So, again, Donna and Matt, thank you very, very much. And, you know, thank you for helping us move forward with the challenging situation. Okay.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. All right. So, with that, we have finished up with our new business. We do still have executive session. So, that is under potential litigation or legal counsel about current potential litigation under RCW 4231101I. I'm guessing, I know we have, so Nikki, what do you think you will need?
Can we just start with 10 minutes?
Sure, sure. So, it is 9:50 right now and hopefully, we'll be back out at 10:00 PM.
You're lucky you got an even time on there and an even number. I had an odd time and a 45-minute span. And I was like, ugh.
Hopefully they will cancel it on us, right?
All right, it is ten-ten and the council is back. There were no decisions made, it was information only. If there is no objection, we are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.